Why don't we start? First, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, special meeting of the Board of Finance. Today, Thursday, March 4th. I'd like to call to order the meeting and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I see we're up to 23 participants, so we had a few folks join. Just to give the audience an understanding of what we're going to try to do tonight. This is the continuation of the deliberation of the Board of Finance of the Board of Selectmen's proposal. We got through Department 230 Public Works on Tuesday. The goal is to get through the remaining departments tonight. And then also vote on the public hearing date and vote on the four summaries that we present to the Board of, excuse me, at the public hearing. So that is the intent for tonight. Any questions from any of the Board of Finance? Cynthia, your hand is up.
It's always up. I'd like to make a motion to discuss dispensing with the procedure of going account by account numerically. And instead, start with larger accounts which merit deeper discussion while our horses are fresh. And I would like a second to that if anyone is.
I would, I would second that. I would like to do the big ones instead of doing them so late. I think that's a good idea.
Discussion.
I don't have a problem with it. I think it wouldn't be bad to start with some of the bigger accounts.
I believe the SAT approach is the best, which is where you start with some easy ones, get some momentum and go from there, but let's, let's vote.
They did that last night.
Did you have a meeting last night? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the other Tuesday night, you know. Oh, yeah, last night in secret with our masks.
The days are blurring together in COVID. All right, so those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Opposed?
Here's a surprise.
There you go. I think that's the right decision, so let's start. All right, we will pick up with Department 240, Highway Department. Let's continue the, the approach we took last meeting, which was Tuesday night, just to keep it moving. So I'll do the motion, Robert, if you wouldn't mind seconding and then for discussion and we'll go from there. Okay.
Bob, I'm sorry, can you just go over the numbers again? Because I, I didn't print off another 41 pages. I know Matt brought this back down to 600 or 500, the road account.
That's down to 500.
That's 500. So, so just give me the percentage that one is, if you don't mind.
The older percentages we talked about the other night?
No, no, just this account because I've got old numbers. It was 24% increase, but what is the increase now? Because.
The account is at 3.290.
3.29. Hey Nick?
Yeah.
It's 1,938,272.
Just so that we're all looking at the same numbers, right? This is, that number is in the package that Bob had sent out to us Tuesday. So nothing, nothing.
Hey Bob?
Yep.
Can, can you tell us where we are year-to-date? Because it's been a pretty big winter for sand and salt. I'm just interested to see how much.
Brian, hold on, let's do the motion and then those are the things we can discuss. All right. In 240, so here's the motion. Motion is to accept as presented by the Board of Selectmen. Department 240 total amount of 1,938,272.
Second.
Discussion. Yeah, Brian.
Can you tell us where we are for this year, year-to-date?
Well, Brad would normally pull that up on Munis, but he's got a problem with his internet right now. So, and I can't get into Munis from home, so we got a problem with that. I can't tell you what the numbers are. He's on right now just using his phone and he, he's able to get into the worksheet, but it's working really slow.
I'm in the Munis, but it's taking a while to load, so let me see if I could get this.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I'm, well, while Brad is doing that, I'm going to guess. The utilization is pretty high because I know that the salt suppliers have had a hard time keeping up with it. Backed up at the two ports, at New London and New Haven. And a fellow I know who works right, whose office overlooks the port in New Haven, said that one day there were like 100 dump trucks lined up from all over the western side of the state waiting for a ship to come in so they could get salt. So I suspect it's going to be high.
Does that mean that there's salt that we've already bought that hasn't been delivered?
Everything that we bought has been delivered so far. You know, when, when, when the usage is heavy, they probably get deliveries every three or four days. But for a while, everybody was running out and the ships weren't coming in fast enough. That happened a few years ago too, where they had a real problem. It wasn't so bad this year. It was, you know, kind of like last minute, touch and go a little bit, but.
So far, so far we've used 42% of our sand budget. And 20% of the salt. But these companies are notoriously slow to bill.
Yeah.
So my guess is there's probably a month or two of bills out there that we haven't paid yet.
And February is when we had most of the snow events, right?
So. Yeah.
But Matt, you know, I'll jump in here. The, the, the salt bin and the sand has been stockpiled all summer long. So if we've only spent 40% of the, of the, of the material, I'm sorry, of the money right now, and we're in March, it sounds like we're doing okay, right?
It just depends on how many bills are outstanding. We go through the same thing with road paving in the summer. Sometimes Dibble will go through the entire season, you know, close up the paving season for, for the, for the season. And he doesn't get the bills, final bills till December or January from the asphalt plant. So, yeah, it's.
Most of our snow came in, in the last month. We don't, if it's going to snow tomorrow, we don't order it today, right? That'd be a fair statement.
Correct.
I'm gonna, Cynthia, you want to ask a question before I make a motion?
Yeah, I just, just an observation that every year, I, I can appreciate, you know, when Bob says he can't get the invoices, he says this for, it's every year. So would, I don't want to get into the realm of operations, but isn't there a way to somehow with the vendors kind of project? What it's going to be? Because every year we don't know because the invoices haven't come.
Yeah, but Bob does that when he does the budget. He, he uses the past history to project. So you're right.
Yeah, but he uses the past year to project, but we could, maybe there was less this year. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, we'll find out when the bills come in. I, I don't think we're over budget in any way. We're, maybe we're significantly under still. I can't tell you. I'm just saying it was, there was a period of time when there was a lot of salt going in, salt and sand both, but. It really was, Daleen was right. It was just that one month that got really bad.
Brian, you have another question or you about to?
I'm going to make a motion.
I have just one question. Bob, in the transfers that we did at the end of last year, is there any way of telling how much of that came from? If there was any sand and salt left over? I know it's kind of small dollars, but.
I could tell you that because I have Munis up. Last year, they didn't spend $34,000 in sand and $52,000 in salt. But just looking at salt, salt, we only used 38,000 last year, but typically salt runs between 66,000 and like 105. So that's why he budges at 87. And sand's the same thing. It could be 50,000, it could be 100,000. So I think that's why he's comfortable with the number of 80,000. It's based on an average winter. But averages are what they are. They're averages.
How does this season compare to last season? Just curious. I think. Go ahead, go ahead, Brad.
It's hard to tell at this point because we don't have all the bills in, but from an actual snowfall, it seems like we've gotten more this year.
Thank you. Yeah, De, did you have a question? Oh, no. Yeah, Brian.
All right, well, it looks like each account was raised by basically $2,500. So I'm going to make a motion online.
But I'm sorry, Eric is, Eric is texting back and forth with me, trying to get y'all information. Do you want to hear that before you make your motion or do you want to go ahead?
Is she trying to join us?
Well, he says he's muted, but I'm. He, but I don't, I don't know why. You can unmute yourself, Eric. Let me see.
I don't see Eric, is he?
He's on, he's on a cell phone. He said he's calling through on a cell phone, so I've only got one cell phone.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. There you are, yes.
Hi, sorry that didn't work before. I just wanted to point out, yeah, I, yeah, we don't have those invoices for the salt and sand that we purchased, but I can say that the snow and ice contracted, which is the, the, the snow plowing that we hire out is over budget. It's at 146%. Based on the, Brad, that's based on the one you sent around the other day. I don't know if it's changed since then. But I can say that that's, that's high, so I just wanted to point that out. If that's relevant.
So, so Eric, from what you are, this indication that we had more activity in terms of the number of times we had to service the roads this winter?
Yeah, this was above average winter. I mean, I, Bob Dibble keeps better statistics on that than I do, but that's my sense. It's not a different. I think the difference is in, in terms of totals, sorry to interrupt you, Brad. Terms of total snowfall might not have been above average, but in terms of the way it came down, sort of, we had this period of like every other day or every two days at one point, that, that was, made it more difficult anyway. Go ahead, Brad.
Snow and ice contracted as of today, because Eric's numbers was as the end of February. So we've paid more since then. We paid 69,000. So that's 25, $26,000 over budget. To compare that to last year, last year we paid 34,000 for the entire year.
And last year there was no snow. Really?
I just have a question before Brad makes this motion. For some reason, in my memory, and this may be faulty, that did we not get some sort of snow plow or some sort of snow, plowing capable truck at some point recently, maybe the past two or three years with the, for the Highway Department? Was that a dream I had?
Two years ago, a large plow truck was approved by the board and a lowboy was approved. That's the patch truck. I don't believe that lowboy patch truck has come in yet. Due to the time it takes.
I'm asking only because of the contract services. I don't know if, you know, the, if the presence of a snow plowing capable vehicle would offset the contracted services. So that would be my question to Eric.
No, it won't.
Yeah, one second here, let me just.
We're, we're not increasing the fleet of trucks. We're replacing trucks that are aging out, like once they hit 25, 26 years, you can't get parts anymore. So it's static.
And Cynthia, the, the snow and ice contracted is to do the school complex and the police station.
Those are the only two contracted?
The train station is contracted out, but that doesn't hit the general fund. That goes against the train station account.
Yeah, yeah, I know that. Oh, so it doesn't count. Okay, got it, thanks.
And the Stony Hill Fire Department, but, but it's mainly the police station in the school system.
Brian, I got one.
Right.
One more question. So if I'm understanding this, and it's been a long day, so I may not be, but if I'm understanding it. We were under budget last year, we're over budget this year. And you do a regression analysis line through it. That's where Bob Dibble's numbers are?
Probably.
Can I add something about two different things? Their contracted services has nothing to do with sand and salt. They're, they're talking about plowing parking lots. They're over. Sand and salt, it looks like we're going to be under.
I take it, well, is that right? I, I, sand and salt, Brad and Eric, are we over or under this year?
So far with what we've paid, we're under because we've used like 50% of each one of them. But those bill, all those bills have not come in yet. And Bob Dibble is keeping his budget flat for sand, salt and contracted, no, contracted these up like 5,000.
He didn't keep the salt and sand flat?
The, you, you have the initial printout, Brian. The most recent printout, he lowered it before they presented their budget for sand and salt.
So what's the number? It's 79,932?
79,932 is the same budget as last year for sand and salt is the same at 87,356. He didn't increase initially in Open Gov in the first printout that Val Kozlowski gave you. It was up, but before they presented their budget, they went back and lowered it to the current year.
All right, well, that was a waste of 10 minutes.
Again, it, it probably would be best if we all, if we have it, look to the latest numbers that Bob Kay sent out Tuesday morning. There were some, if you remember, there were some glitches in the Munich's or presentations, but that, that's got the latest number that in total ties to the 82,514,136. I'm sorry, Brian, motion or no motion now?
Yes, you know, I was only looking to cut 1250 from each because, you know, we're trying to get to 2%. And it's not going to happen if we don't start cutting some things. And, you know, I think it's a modest reduction and, you know, this year was a very heavy year and I'm if I'm going to bet, we're still going to be under at the end of the year. I mean, you know, these companies don't allow you to keep buying stuff through February without paying any bills. So I imagine November, when we had our first snowstorm, then ones in December and January were probably paid for. Would you agree with that, Brad, historically?
I'm looking at some of the history now. So the last big year that we had of salt, we were paying the end of March was probably about half of the bills. So Morton, we get our salt from Morton. They're a large company and it seems like the local guys, like the snow and ice contracted, they bill much quicker. Morton, they're just slower to bill us.
Now, maybe if I could ask Eric, is part of that though, you know, at the end of March, we just, you know, if there's money left over, we start replenishing our salt and sand for next year? Like, do we do that at the end of the, like, at the end of the season, if we budgeted $80,000, will you buy extra salt and sand just to pre-stock for the next year?
Yeah, there's money left over, yes, I would say. Sorry, Brian.
Sorry, Eric. The year I was looking at, Brian, we went over in salt by 15,000. So that probably wouldn't have been a year that Bob Dibble ordered more to fill his coffers for the following year.
Right, but, you know.
I can say this based on my, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You're free to talk.
I was just going to say, Bob, I don't think Bob Dibble's on the phone right now, but while I spoke to him the other day and assuming no more snow after today, I, I mean, my fingers are crossed here. We won't go over on the sand and salt because I just, we were just going over the numbers and he is going to keep within the budget. And he was, he was talking to me the other day about refilling the supplies because we were running low. If we're in the clear now and this is spring on the way, then, then we shouldn't be going over this year.
Eric, I think the question is, is there any chance it's going to go the other way? And I think what you're telling us is, no, you wouldn't bet now I'm coming in under.
Right. I, I mean, we'd be, yeah, I think we'd be right about on the mark. Not over, not under, because I think we need to refill for next year. Does that answer your question? The answer's mine, thank you.
Well, all right, I'll just let us vote on the budget now and, you know, for now, it's where we're at. We could come back and revisit it.
All right, so any other discussion? All right, not seeing any hands up. All those in favor of the motion of accepting the Board of Selectmen's proposal as is for Department 240 in a total amount of 1,938,272, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Think that means Cynthia opposed. Okay. Next, Department 245 Transfer Station. Make a motion that we accept as proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Transfer Station total amount, total departmental amount for 203,751,000.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing any discussion from Board of Selectmen, excuse me, Board of Finance members. All the favor, please signify of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That looks unanimous. Dion, if I'm, if we're not going, if we're going too fast, let us know, but you're good, okay. All right, next Department 250 Planning and Zoning. I'll make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen proposal as for Selectmen proposal for the Department 250 Planning and Zoning, total departmental amount, 260,008.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question that came up when I was looking on Open Gov. Oh, am I muted? No, not. Who actually, there was a, there were, I don't have it right in front of me, the amount, but there's contracted services for permit review and I was just curious who reviews the permits? How, how does that happen? Maybe Matt knows.
It goes to Wright Pierce, the engineering firm.
Okay.
The more detailed ones, that's the company that we use.
Okay, so you just automatically use them or do they, are they just sort of the chosen people or do they? Is anything like that ever bid on?
Yeah. There was a bid that went out a couple of years ago and Wright Pierce is, won that bid at that particular time. So they have it for, I think it's three years.
Three years, okay, that, that, thank you.
Brian? You're on mute? You're on mute, Brian?
Nothing. I was going to help answer, but I'm going to have to abstain on this when we come to the vote, just because I have some projects coming up. So kind of like the building department, I'll take myself out of this one.
Any other discussions? Not, not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 250 in a total amount of 260,080, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We've got six ayes and one extension. Next apartment, Department 260 Building and Maintenance. I'll make us, make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation as is for a department total of 842,204.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, Bob Kay, can you tell me contracted services for 320? I mean, is that elevator security? What kind of contract services is that?
Let me see if I've got some details on it. If not, if Eric is still here, I think he had a list that he had put together, but let me see what I got.
It's elevator contracts, cleaning contract, HVAC, service contracts, generator service contract, you know, for town hall here. That's, that's probably not the whole list.
Refuge servicing.
Roof maintenance, energy management, automatic door service. Yeah, fire, security alarm system, refuge services for the town. Matt mentioned the elevated emergency generator service, sprinkler system, carpet cleaning. And the biggest one, 130,000, and there's cleaning, the cleaning contract for the PD, the library, the town hall and Public Works Garage.
And, and the negotiated salaries for 320,000, that is obviously our building guy to do work orders for our town buildings and the schools?
Correct.
And how many employees is that at 323?
I think it's six. Brad, do you know?
Five full-time employees. The open six, it was reduced to five, probably five or six years ago.
Five employees?
Yes, plus their longevity and there's some overtime and stuff in there too. That's not just base pay.
And I had to note that there are two, two are union, correct?
All five are union.
They're wrong. Okay, any other questions?
And just maintenance repairs, is that product to fix what we're doing? Divide ballasts and light bulbs, is that what that is? 158 for that product?
That should be everything.
Yeah, I mean, you got lumber hardware, roof, office supplies, air conditioning service and repairs, plumbing supplies, fire maintenance repair system, bolts, not screws, emergency generator, I mean, yeah, it's all supplies.
Does that say, isn't there a section for new doors for older buildings? Did I see that? Is that something that's in there? Hello, is the caller?
I'm not sure. I'm looking at Excel. That's, that's not my Excel.
Oh, I'm looking at the Open Gov.
Might be Munis.
I'm looking at the Open Gov.
Okay, in Open Gov. It may, may have been a note put in there for that.
Yes, there is doors and maintenance in there too.
I thought, I thought, okay, thanks.
I'm good.
Any other questions from board member? All right, not, not seeing any other questions. All those in favor of the motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 260 in a department total of 842,204, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next Department 270 Tree Warden. I will make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 270 in the department total of 117,900.
Second.
Discussion. I'm sorry, Nick, did you have your hand up or?
No.
Anybody else with question? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I think that's everyone, okay, unanimous. Next apartment, Department 290. I'll make a proposal to accept Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 290 Emergency Management for a departmental total of 42,402.
Second.
Discussion. I don't see any hands up for discussion, so all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next department is Department 300. Make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 300 Fire Marshal for the departmental total of 109,630.
Second.
Discussion. Not seeing any hands up for discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Hey, Bob? We, we made the next. I'm sorry.
What'd you say, Cynthia?
I voted aye. I just didn't raise my hand because I was looking at something on the screen.
So Dion, do you have that? Nick, question?
I'm good. I'm good. Go ahead. Move on.
Moving on. All right, next department is Department 310 Bethel Fire Department. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 310 Bethel Fire Department, a departmental total of 182,900. for Department 310 Bethel Fire Department, departmental total of one hundred and eighty-two thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
They don't have their capital projects in there or anything.
Alright, not seeing any hands for discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Get us, Dion? Next department, 320. Make a motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 320 Stony Hill Fire Department for the departmental total of one hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
The ones I didn't mark down.
Hands up for questions, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next Department 330 Registered Voters. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 330 Registered Voters, Voters for a departmental total of one hundred and five thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Little lapdog second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next department is 340 Town Boards and Commissions. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 340 Town Boards and Commissions for a departmental total of fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, Department 350 Health Department. Make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for the Department 350 Health in a total departmental budget amount of four hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Cynthia.
I'm sorry, I was just.
Just checking the call.
Just seeing if my halo is still up there.
I'm gonna have to abstain from this one, too.
Any, any questions? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have six ayes and an extension. My next department, Department 360 Police Department, I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 360 for a departmental total of five million one hundred ninety-six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Second.
Discussion. I think you got a couple, I think Dee may have been first, just because Cynthia, you go first all the time.
Thank you, Cynthia.
First in our hearts, first in our questions.
I am the queen of hearts.
Dee.
So I, I'd like to make a suggestion that we consider putting the new police, taking the twenty thousand dollars out for the new police officer for half a year in this budget. And the reason for that would be not because I don't think it's important to have another police officer on the street. But we did approve one last year, we approved one two years before that. And I think having one for in the full budget cycle next time around might just be a better representation of what it's actually gonna cost the town, because there are benefits and things to add to that twenty thousand dollars, so that would be my, excuse me, suggestion for the police budget for this year.
Dee, was that a motion?
It was a motion, I say we take twenty thousand dollars out of the police operating budget.
And.
I would second.
Hold on, I'm sorry, just to be, because Cynthia is gonna yell at me if I don't do this technically.
No, because she took the words right out of my mouth.
Department 360 Account 106. Bob, Bob K, is that right? Brad, is that right?
But we have a motion and a second, right, so.
No, your, your sheet says 106, technically it's 101.
101, oh.
Yeah, because they're, all the salaries are in 101.
So we actually, we have an amended motion made by Dee, seconded by Nick. And that is to reduce the account that's labeled in our sheets as 106 negotiated salaries by twenty thousand.
Rachel has since apologized and is now a frontrunner on the show, which for the first time features a black bachelor. A lot of people, and I'm wondering, why would you defend Rachel Kirkendall? I'm an imperfect man, I made a mistake.
I need to mute everyone.
Yeah, and I want a spoiler alert, I was planning on watching The Bachelor later tonight. Ah. Heartbreak, now I know. Okay, so. Sorry, I'm so shaken up by the spoiler. I, I think we're good, I think we're about to vote on this, right, any more question?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, Nick, you have a question?
Are we voting on the amended mo, amended number?
Amended motion. Taking.
I'm sorry.
We're not there yet. Alright, so on that amended motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, so unanimous that twenty thousand is coming out of Department 360 101.
And Bob, I'd like to make a motion that we take out thirty thousand out of police overtime. We're trying to get to a certain goal, and if we don't start chopping at it.
I will second that.
I second, Cynthia can.
Okay, you want a third?
Thank you for the support.
So the, the motion is to take twenty thousand, excuse me, thirty. I'm not, say again, Nick?
Thirty, three.
Yep, thirty out of 360, 107 overtime, thirty thousand.
That's correct.
Alright, discussion.
The chief and I spoke a lot about his overtime the last two days. He can't be on the call tonight, but he did ask me to let you know that his budget request is what he thinks the actual OT will be. Obviously, if you guys cut it, you guys cut it, but he does anticipate the OT request that he put in is what it's gonna be, and that, that's what he's pretty much been running for overtime every year.
And Brad, just to add to that, that you have the one, one officer that's, that's on military leave, so his salary goes into that, into that ball, isn't that correct? And each year, it normally is pretty close. Through this pandemic, which has been a lot of overtime, we're still thirty-nine thousand on the good side, so that's why I just made the motion.
I actually gave you the wrong number, Nick, we're actually running higher than the three thousand I said the other day. He does anticipate that his OT is gonna be closer to three hundred thousand this year, like eight thousand of which is for related to the COVID. Because he had to bring officers in, because he had officers quarantining and everything else. So there is, I, I know what you're speaking of, Nick, but that does usually create more overtime.
But again, it, it just, you know, I, I think the chief needs to do a better job managing what we give him. You just can't have a taxi meter just run, and you're gonna blow past three hundred thousand, and we just have to stomach it. We have to do more with less these days, I know everybody's gonna argue with me on that, but my motion's out there, and I think I had a second.
I'll just add one last thing that he told me today was that his overtime has been running about three hundred K a year. The fact that it's been running around that, it actually means it is decreasing because this officers are getting more money as they get new contracts. So by staying flat, actually is by way a decrease every year.
Thank you, Brad.
I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian, I'll.
Brad, the new officer that we hired last year should be out of the academy and through FTO, so shouldn't we see, I mean, a, a savings in that, I don't, I personally don't think thirty thousand dollars is that big a hit on this line, you know, a lot of times, you know, we've talked about this every year for, I mean, at least since I've been on the board, you know, you're always gonna have, unfortunately, the nature of the business, you're always gonna have people out on workers' comp. You know, thank you to the people who serve our country who get called up, you're gonna have that, too, so a lot of times at the end of the year, this balances out, I mean, I, I really don't see this being that big of a cut, I mean, honestly.
Yeah, I believe he has a couple officers that are coming out of the academy and then off-training in that count, in that fiscal year.
Yeah, so that should help a little bit, right?
The only, the only thing I was gonna, going to ask is that since we just took a new police officer out of the mix, does that create a greater need for the additional overtime?
I had just talked, I'm sorry, Brad, I had just talked to the chief about it, and that new officer is on the road by himself now, I, I think it was almost like last week. And I know it doesn't change the, the overtime dollar for dollar, I have a lot of history in this, as Brian does also, but it does help it. So adding another officer over last year, he is on the street now, not dollar for dollar, but it definitely helps the overtime bill.
Well, I guess, Nick, that's my point, so we just took twenty thousand dollars out of their request for this year for a new officer, so does that, do we wanna leave the overtime the way it is in case they need to pay more overtime to you know, keep the force on the street at the level it needs to be, since we're denying them another officer this year?
But that officer wasn't at twenty thousand dollars. Putting it at the back end of the year, I mean, we're talking about three months. And if they didn't hire a certified officer for that position, the person's gonna be in the academy for a minimum of six months, and then three months of FTO, so I don't think they were even considered in the budget in terms of overtime this year. And if they did, it would be very, you know, it'd be a quarter, right, because they're really not active.
Yeah, I just, two, two things, one is, you know, hey, call me the skunk at the picnic, but I, don't you think it would be, or maybe for future sessions, that it would be more appropriate to have somebody from the police department representing the chief rather than Brad, although Brad is a fountain of knowledge, it just, that seems more reasonable to me. The second thing is that, yeah, we do talk, hmm? We do talk about the overtime every year, and and this is, this is a general point, but maybe something to think about. You know, any departments that generate some sort of revenue, maybe there is a creative way to somehow instead of scraping the plate off into the general fund, having that revenue offset budget costs, just saying. So I'm, I support the thirty thousand dollar cut.
The revenue Cynthia, that the police generate, it does go into the mill recalculation, so it is part of that already. Yeah, I know it's, it's on, so it's on the expenses, it's also on the revenue side.
Look, I.
Right.
They're disjointed.
Discussion, and I get the point, I, I'm hesitant to make any cut in the overtime, only because it, the chief said it was what he thinks it's gonna come in, and this account has historically been over. And I don't think it's financially prudent to budget an account under an amount that you know is gonna go over.
So Steve Pugner just joined the meeting, he's gotta unmute himself, but he is, he is with us now.
So I don't know, do we have any more questions, or do we wanna vote on the modified motion?
Move the question.
Alright, all those in favor?
We do, we do have Chief, Chief Pugner here, is there any open questions for him?
I thought that's what I just asked, but let's ask it again.
Move the question.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion to cut thirty thousand from Department 360 Account 107 Overtime, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Alright. So it failed, the modified motion fails for three. Anything else in this department?
It's gonna be a long night.
Do we need to then, given the twenty thousand dollar adjustment to the 101, I assume we need to re-motion the total? Dion, is that, or Bob, procedurally, is that right?
I mean, one seventy-six, six ninety-nine?
Yeah, but down by, down by twenty, so.
But you just, you just make the motion for the total after you make your motions on what you're gonna take out of each account.
Okay.
What, one more, I'm sorry, Bob, is there benefits in that package, is there uniform money? What else am I missing? I guess, I guess benefits and uniform money should come out of that twenty also, right?
Well, we didn't, I don't think, well, Steve put the budget together, I don't think there's anything in there for those items, because it was a lot of part of the year, maybe, maybe the uniforms, but if.
I, I didn't put any additional in there for uniforms.
So you had enough in your account to pay for new uniforms for that guy if you got it, chief?
If we got it, we would figure it out, but it did not put it in there, so no.
So can we lower that account then?
No, I, I didn't put it in there, so you can't lower that account.
But you would have had the money if you got the officer?
Would have figured something out if we got the officer, I did not put it in there, no.
Thank you.
Anything else for Department 36? Alright, so now we then need to make a motion on the modified amount. Motion would be to accept the modified amount in the total department. Brad, I'll check my math, but I think this one's pretty easy, five million, one.
One quick question. I, I know that the selectman took one of the cars away from the department, and I'm not suggesting taking another car away, but it would, would it make sense to do what we did last year and pay for one of the cars out of capital non-recurring, so we're paying cash for it out of our capital non-recurring account?
Okay, for, I, I'd rather not at this point, because we've got two million plus of expenses of items already teamed up for that account. Any, any other thoughts? Alright, well, let's go to the department total revised to be five million one hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. All those in favor of the revised amount, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Will you just say that number one more time?
Five million one hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you.
Alright, so I think it, Brian, I think it was five, two? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, Nick, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Voting. Okay.
Next department, Department 380 Park and Recreation. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommended departmental total one million five hundred forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit this statement I made before yesterday when we were entering our discussions. It's true with the Parks and Rec and also with Senior Center. I think it's overly optimistic to think that we're gonna be at business as usual come July first. And I feel that we're going to be under this COVID drapery for at least the first two quarters. And knowing that the Parks and Recreation, a lot of their program fees are revenue generating, I think that I would like to make a motion to reduce the program fees by one hundred thousand dollars. And if in the course of action, they are able to make, run these programs and have them in a revenue, then I would reserve at a later point revisiting that cut in order. revisiting that, uh, cut in order to, um, accommodate them. But right now, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the budget by 100,000.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Discussion.
So Bob, if I can just say, if you take $100,000 out of program cost, you gotta take 100,000 out of program revenue too.
The only thing I would ask, answer for that, Bob, is we, we know Eileen's got some programs that are not profitable. She talked about those. I'd ask her to focus on the non-profitable. And then let's, let's also quantify how many people were, how much expense was incurred for non-program items. Uh, we know that some of the money got used in other ways. So I think that, that should, should, like, we disproportionately reduce the hit to revenue.
It might, uh, uh, accommodate some of those dollars, but, um, uh, I don't think it would accommodate $100,000.
Well, I think the point is that it's just gotta be less than that, right?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna see if Eileen can join because, uh, we've had some, uh, discussions about this. Uh, parents are gonna need, uh, help for their kids, uh, and they're anticipating the back half of the summer moving forward. But that's gonna be an issue.
I think, Matt, what Robert is saying, at that point, that's when Eileen comes to us and says, I've got programs that are gonna generate a lot of income. And we say, that's an automatic, it's easy, that's an easy answer.
I would support your motion, Bob.
Any other?
Can I just say something real quick? This is Eileen.
Sure.
Okay, so, so basically what you're going to do is you're gonna penalize my department because of COVID throughout all of next year because I, we have to follow the state guidelines that are presently in place. And in summer, when I'm gonna try to run basketball, you're gonna tell me I have to come to you to ask for money, but I've already have registration with kids on the waiting list. And I have to tell them no because I don't have funds in my operating budget to pay for custodians or pay for the schools to be open or pay for referees. And as, um, the state is right now opening up more and with the governor's, uh, message today, that come the summer, they're asking us to be fully with camp and other activities. And we are planning to have camp come July 1st. And of course, we all know there's no guarantee. But we have met with the school and we are going to offer a full slate of summer programs as well as planning to start in the fall.
I, I think that's great, that's great, man, great. I, maybe you pull forward then the program money from the spring. Right, and come back to us in the spring. It's not meant to be a penalty. I think it's just meant to try to be fiscally prudent in a year where we have tremendous uncertainty. Right, this, this board, as you know, has tremendous respect for you and your department and your teams. Um, Robert's points, that, I mean, Robert can speak to it better than I can, is that we still have tremendous uncertainty as to COVID. And to the extent that you think come maybe spring, that you've got profitable programs, you come to us and it's, that's a real easy discussion. Right, you come, hey, I'm running spring programs, they're gonna make money, and then I think that's, that's it, we're done.
Uh, if I might, uh, just wanna give you guys a reminder, uh, actually, you might not even know this yet, the governor just today announced the phase reopening of a number of things, including sports. And spring is now, uh, I mean, spring is happening right now, and there are already programs running right now. So, uh, just be careful that you don't cut so much that, I mean, you can't, she can't run a program if she has to come back to you every 30 days when you meet looking for more money. It's, it's, uh, that's kind of a difficult thing to do.
Oh, absolutely, man. That's why we would never do that, right? We're not cutting 30 days here. We're, we're saying the, really the fourth quarter in the year. So I think as an operational matter, it should be really easy. Uh, we're not, we're not looking at every 30 days for, to look over Eileen's shoulder. She does it a lot better than me. Cynthia, did you have a question?
No, I realize that it's gonna be for another line item. I have a question, so when, we can move on.
All right, any further discussion of Robert's motion uh, to reduce line item in the Park and Rec Department, line item 316 by 100,000?
Just a question for Bob. Bob, can, can you just explain to me, just in kinda layman's terms, what that does to your budgeting that you would put forward? Cause I know you talked about revenue and we take the 100,000 away. Wh- what does that do in terms of the overall budget and your calculations, like in real numbers?
Yeah, so typically, um, Park and Rec that they run have, uh, uh, profitabilities built into them, okay? So if, if you're cutting 100, you're really losing maybe 115 or 120,000 in revenue. And if you want me to be prudent, I gotta cut the revenue too.
Bob, can you, can you give us an estimate of how much money was spent on non-programs?
You have to go into municipal CDA. I don't have that open. Brad may be able to get that up.
That'd be helpful, right? Because if we eliminate those kinds of services, then we're actually eliminating a loss. We're not eliminating revenue.
One, one of the expenses that are in there this year are the greeters upfront, which are being covered by, uh, FEMA. You know, we'll, we'll be reimbursed for that. And also, um, the different students that are going around on the touch surfaces, cleaning the, you know, the doorknobs and, and the railings and things like that, and that's also covered. So, um, but outside of that, this year, you really, you know, there were some programs, but, uh, nothing like, uh, the year before. Brad gave me for Tuesday night's meeting, uh, credit card, uh, receipts of 27,000 for last month on, on some of the programs already, you know? Um, I just, I, I don't know what it was the prior month, but that's a big uptick from what we had in the past this fiscal year. So, you know, I think to say it's gonna be a quarter or six, six months. I know all my grandchildren are playing ball already. Down in Pennsylvania, up in Boston. I mean, they're out there at this point, and they've been out there for a couple of months. So, uh, I, I, I think it's short-sighted to say that, um, you know, they're not gonna be playing come July 1st, that you gotta wait until, you know, September 1st or even December 1st. Because now you're getting into the winter season. So.
Hey, um, Bob, I have a question. It's, since Eileen is on, you know, can we pick up something on maintenance? Could some fences not be repaired? Or contracted services? Can we do a little more in-house? Can we, I, I know we vote on line items, but can we move stuff around a little bit? I, Eileen, if you're still there?
I am still here. Um, it's the same thing. You've cut those accounts over the past few years and things don't get done. The parks are being used more and more this year, the past year. Because of COVID, we have expenses, we have fences that have to be repaired, and it becomes a safety issue um, during, if you start to cut, um, certain things. So, um, it, it, it just sad that a service of recreation and the parks is gonna get the, one of the.
Thank you.
I think.
Nope. Uh, Dee?
Oh, can I ask, maybe this is a question for Brad, cause he has the data, but, so, um, the $27,000, uh, for credit card revenue, was that for February or March? And, um, 2020 wouldn't be a good year to use, but 2019, what was the average revenue, credit card revenue in those months? Can we compare that to what we've got for the current month that Bob was just talking about? So we can see if things are, like, how much are things, are things recovering is my question.
Well, Brad can check that, and I think really what you gotta look at is the prior months in this fiscal year to see the uptick, the trend that, that's going on. If we had 2,000 or 3,000, and then we went to 7,000, and all of a sudden we went up to 27, you see an uptick already this year. To compare it to 19, maybe deceiving because she had the full programs running at that time. So 27 may be on the low side.
So are you feeling, Bob and Eileen, like you, when you funded the budget request, you didn't fund it 100% for programs? Did you fund it some, do you use number for the first and second quarters, let's say? Because I think it was about a $500,000 request, right? Was that to me?
120,000.
There it is.
It was 486.
486, right. So I, I guess I'm just curious, like, you know, look, we all want everybody to be back to normal. There's no doubt about that. And I don't think any of us would, um, vote down a request from Eileen who comes and says, look, the programs are going gangbusters and I need more money to do this. We 100% would, I, I would 100% support that. Especially because it's a revenue generator and it's a little more than one to one, right? We make a little bit of a profit on it. So I think that's, you know, a no-brainer from a financial perspective. The question mark is to be, you know, fully fund these programs for the first and second quarters when there is no vaccine for children yet. Um, we still don't know if we're out of the woods on the pandemic. And, you know, it'd be nice if we had some data to suggest what this year so far is, or this next, this month is looking like so far compared to a normal year like 2019.
Well, the, the past, the, the past, the, um, credit card that was just put through was, um, all of our preschool programs and aftercare programs when schools gotten in full session, which is what they're now, and our preschool program numbers have increased. And we are planning on having spring programs outdoors, which is like basketball, which we weren't able to run in the winter. We're gonna start to run it outdoors in the spring and we're going to try to do as many programs as we can, as well as advertise and get income for summer camp that will be starting come the end of June. All that revenue from summer camp registration will be coming in through May and June of this year. So.
Eileen? Do you have programs that are non, that are in your programs account that don't bring in revenue? I know you pay overtime to the guys because they have to go and clean the parks.
Yeah.
That's not in your program account?
No. Um, the things that don't usually bring in revenue that are in there are insurance, custodial fees, um, uh, let's see, what else? Um, I would say those are the, the main ones. Everything else we try to run out of that account, we try to, you know, get as income. Um, equipment, your playground, athletic equipment, playground, uh, program equipment may not always be covered through registration fees.
Um, I, I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, Eileen, are you done?
Yep.
I, I'd like to read something to you, cause this came out from the governor's office at 4 o'clock today. You might not have seen it. Beginning Friday, March 19th, all capacity limits will be eliminated for the following businesses. Base coverings will still be required. And here's the list, restaurants, retail, libraries, personal services, all indoor recreation, uh, gyms, fitness centers, museums, aquariums, zoos, offices, houses of worship. Uh, all sports will be allowed to practice and compete. All sports tournaments will be allowed, subject to Department of Public Health guidance. Uh, travel advisory will be modified from a requirement to a recommended practice. And then, beginning Monday, March 29th, capacity limits on early childhood classes, like the, uh, early, the Little Tikes programs that Eileen runs, will increase from 16 to 20. Beginning Friday, April 2nd, uh, outdoor amusement parks open, outdoor event venues can double their capacity capped at 10,000 people. We don't have to worry about that one. Indoor stadiums can open at 10% capacity. Summer camps, summer festivals are advised to begin to be planning stages to open for the upcoming season. So, I mean, it, it might not be full participation, but it's gonna be pretty high.
Sure.
Any more discussion of the motion?
So what was the line item for the motion? Was it 316? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
So Brian and Nick were opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, um, any other discussion of Park and Rec?
Oh, yes, yeah, sorry. I have a question for Eileen since she's here. Hey, um, so Eileen, tell me about just, there's two lines, 206 and 315, maintenance and supplies and park maintenance and repairs. And both of them have gone up. And, you know, it may, you may have said this in your presentation, and I've just, you know, it's not in my head. What would, what are some of the major things that, that would, that caused that to go up? I guess between the two of them would be, I don't know, 15, maybe 16, $70,000? Hello?
Eileen, you're, you're on mute if you're answering the question.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. So maintenance supplies are the increase of the 2%, about 2% of the supplies that we get, which is paint, um, grass seed, um, the porta-potties and the dumpsters and the extra dumping of those and repairing equipment. And so there's been an increase on those, and it's an account that you guys have cut every year over the past two years. So, um, that's why that one's up. And the other one is related to trying to keep our fences and backstops and parks properly maintained with remaking repairs to them as well. And trees coming down and trees needing, that are dangerous that need to be cut at parks and that kinda thing. So the cost of those. Which, again, you've cut, over the past two years, cut those two accounts and, um, we're getting behind on those repairs.
Okay, I, I'm just thinking that maybe there are a couple things that, you know, cause you didn't say anything that was specifically urgent right now. Um, but I would like to make a motion to cut that account by, sorry, the park maintenance repairs to cut 315 by $5,000. Let's go in and second that for discussion.
I'll second it. I'm sorry, second it.
Is that $5,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a thought, but maybe before I talk, does anyone else have some questions or comments?
Well, I just wanna say where I'm coming from is that if, if there was something that was major that was, because every year I know that they struggle with, it seems the same things, like fence repair and the limb trimming and whatever. So, um, if they're getting, if things are dangerous and then they could come, they should come back for, with a request. But if they're saying that we cut it every year, and then they get behind, that doesn't, to me, speak to a sense of urgency. So I think 5,000 is a reasonable thing. And if they, if something happens or they need something more, they come to us. It's just, it's a different kinda atmosphere we're in right now.
And I think, if, if I could just, uh, say, I think those items are more safety, uh, related, you know, the trees, uh, keeping the backstops in good condition. Uh, the, the maintenance, I think that Eileen is talking about, is, is not sprucing things up for cosmetic, but actually maintaining them for, from a safety aspect. So, I'm, I'm not sure I support that.
Okay, then maybe Eileen can answer. What, what, I, maybe I didn't understand. What's the difference then between 206 and, and, uh, 315? Again, I'm sorry.
206 is like the daily operation materials that we need, like clay for the infields and grass seed and supplies to clean the bathrooms and all those daily, weekly products. The, the other ones are major repairs to fences, the mesh on the fences, it's the trees that need to be trimmed, it's the, um, uh, if the, the paving at McCowen needs to be repaired, mulch for the playgrounds, that type of thing. Sorry.
I get it now. So, I, I get it. So let me just, I'm sorry, if I, I don't know if I amend or change or rescind that motion and make a motion to cut 5,000 from line 206, maintenance and supplies. Because maybe there's, there are cheaper cleaning materials or whatever to get. So I'm going to make, do I have to rescind that, Dion?
So just to, yeah, just rescind and I, and I'll, I'll amend it and, and make the emotion. You just need the 206 seconded.
Can I have a second on that motion?
And you're.
Instead of try, making a motion for the number 315 park maintenance and repairs, I want to cut 5,000 from 206, which is maintenance and supplies. Your paints, your cleaners, your whatever.
And I, and I think Brian, um, made a second. And Bob, is it open for discussion now? I'm sorry.
Yes, discussion.
You know, uh, Robert cut $100,000 from programs and Bob K just told us that would generate probably 120, 130. So we're, we're trying to get to a number. So I'm okay with not, not mulching a playground. I think programs are probably more important than some other of these maintenance things. And I'm a big guy on, we should always repair what we buy. And Bethel has a history of not doing that. But in a pandemic year, I think we should back off on the back, on, on the, the, the wood for the, the, the baseball fields or some fence repairs. I think programs are more important that directly affect the kids opposed to some of these other repairs. So it sounds like you guys are fighting on five or $10,000, but was no problem chopping 100 out of something that generated 140.
Hey Nick, let, let's be clear because I think we weren't clearly misunderstood our point, right? Our point is Eileen can come back. And
I guess.
And say, now I am certain COVID has miraculously gone away. All the vaccines are good. We are in happy days again. And she can come to us and say, I am certain now that we're going to run those programs. And we will say, excellent, we're so glad, run those programs. We're not taking away those programs.
Okay, I got you.
Let's not confuse that decision with this one. That's.
I got you. At the end of the night, we're not, we're not really, we're not cutting any spending here at, at the end of the night, really. Because when she comes back, because I feel the programs are going to come back, we're going to just give her the money. But the money gets put back in another pot. I, I.
Right, and Eileen?
I, I think Nick, the, um, the thing that I would like to avoid, and obviously this has been a crazy year that no one could anticipate exactly what was going to happen. But, you know, Parks and Rec and some other departments had money that they didn't spend because they didn't do things like some of these programs, right? So we tax people on that money, the money's sitting there, it didn't get used. This is a way to say to Eileen, you know, we hope the programs come back gangbusters. There is no vaccine for children yet. Grandparents are still potentially at risk. Kids are going to want to see their grandparents, like as an example. So, you know, this is a way to say like, you know, we're funding three quarters of what was asked for. And one quarter of that is not going to be funded, but we, you're welcome to come back and tell us that we were wrong.
Happy, we'd be happy.
We'd be happy to be wrong. I'd be happy to be wrong.
And I, look, Bob K, all, we should talk maybe some more, but I, I think if you look to this year, model it out, there's a lot of program expense that did not generate any revenue. Those are the, that's the focus I would suggest. Right, so it does end up taking out expense and takes out no meaningful revenue.
And, and if I can just add one thing, they may, even though they don't really generate a lot of revenue, they may be in need for a single mom or something. You know, we're, we're trying to help these people that really need the help. And it's just, you know, trust me, that's a tough one right there.
All right.
Um, I'm just going to say this as respectfully and politely as I can. I understand a little bit where the frustration's coming. Seems like we're kind of going party lines again this year. You know, there's been some, just some suggestions made with minimal impacts to the budget. Uh, you know, Dailene, to your point, there's other accounts that have surpluses in them year after year that we don't cut. Uh, we generally have 900,000 to a million dollars left that goes back into the grand list. To, so to say that, you know, now we're woke and we're not going to spend money that wasn't used or there was a surplus in fairness to Eileen. And look, I, I, I really don't know 100%, you know, I, I, I was more interested in what Bob, Bob has much more expertise. But what we're forgetting is that all these things require scheduling. You don't wake up in August and say, I'm going to run a sports league in September. It, it's not the way because people are looking for commitments, people are looking for jobs, people are looking for things for their kids to do. And if Bethel's saying, we're not going to run this program, right? They're going to go someplace else and the program's a bust anyway. So I just think we're oversimplifying it by saying, hey, just come back to us when the pandemic's over and we're going to rev up full speed. That's not the way things work, especially sports and large events. They take planning, they take time and they take commitments from people. So that's just my thought. I know we're voting on Cynthia's thing in terms of, you know, a $5,000 reduction. I mean, there's still a reduction, I mean, there's still an increase in the line. So Cynthia, I'll support your motion here.
Eileen, I'm just curious, right? That, that account runs every year, uh, it has a rhythm to it. Where have you come in on that account in prior years? Over, under, spot on?
I've been over pretty much probably the past two years. So it's been consistently an account that runs because it's a rainy season, you gotta buy diamond dry. You know, it depends on the time and extra cleanings and vandalism and whatever else happens, so.
Eileen?
I would actually argue against reducing that number by any amount because I don't know about you guys, but I have found that cleaning supplies, when you can get them, are more expensive, not less expensive now. So if we're counting on finding some cheaper cleaning supplies, I don't think that's going to happen for Eileen because it hasn't happened for me. I don't know about you guys.
I'd say we move the question, Bob.
Yeah, any more discussion? No, okay. All those in favor of the motion to reduce line item 206 in the 380 Parks and Rec department, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Okay.
So the yeses were Nick, Brian and Cynthia.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, um, so the new total, anything else in Department 380? The new total in Department 380, $1,444,285. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next department, 390, employee benefits. Bob, we know, or we heard on Tuesday, there's a $30,000 reduction.
Correct.
What line item is that?
That would be 113, the hospitalization.
We need a motion on that line item and then total or just total?
No, I would say you probably should do a motion.
Okay.
Prove the reduction and then do the total.
Now.
Hey, hey, Bob, uh, this is Matt. This, I didn't correct my slide. I, uh, we did that the other day. What, what is the, the total right now with that, with that change that came in Tuesday?
It's 118939.
I'm sorry, it's what?
6 million, 118939.
Okay.
That, that's before the, the change.
That's right. I'll, I'll make a motion to reduce, um, 390, um, 113 by $30,000. So, uh, reducing that amount to, um, uh, 2837488.
Second. So $2,837,488. Any discussion? Brian?
Bob, uh, after eliminating the new position of police officer, how much does that take off of the employee benefits?
We didn't budget for that in this account at all.
Oh, nothing under pension, right?
You know, people retire. Uh, you, you never know whether or not someone's going to be a family, two person, single, you know? So, I mean, we have based this number based on the history that we have right now.
Thanks, Bob.
So all those in favor of the motion, or I guess discussion of the motion? All those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now we need, anything else in 390? All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the revised total of 6,889,939.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? All right. Um, next, Department 400, non-governmental agency subsidies. Uh, there's nothing in that account.
No, you don't have to worry about that. That goes to social services.
Okay. Now one more account, or excuse me, department. Um, Department 405, intra-government agency subsidies. Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for a departmental total of 476,971.
Second.
Discussion. Not seeing any, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 410. Department 410, utilities, utilities, charges and services. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation in a departmental total of $2,469,460.
Second.
Discussion. Cynthia?
Um, yeah, just a general question to you, Bob K. Have there not been any, and you may have already said this at one point, but have there not been any savings realized from, you know, not maybe from town vehicles? From, uh, buildings, heating the buildings, lighting the buildings? Have there been any sort of savings over the past year for, of utilities still?
Well, the, um, the buildings were pretty much full, fully functional. You had to put, keep the heat on and you, you had the electricity on in most of them. You know, we have the sensors that go off when someone's not in the room after a certain period of time. Uh, there, there were some savings, but, uh, and there was reductions and this, this account is down $80,000. So we're, we're taking, you know, the, the trend into, um, uh, play here, so, um.
So the utilities, the, yeah, I guess I was asking about fuel, but, um, and gas, is that because the prices went up?
Well, they, they went up a little bit, but then they spiked down too, you know? So, uh, you know, we, we did have during the height of COVID, we had trucks going out with single men in there rather than two, to protect the men. So we were using more gas, more diesel, you know, so, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Discussion. Right, all those in favor of the motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation for Department 410, department total of $2,469,460, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, process check. It's just about eight o'clock. We have, looks like about six more departments to go through. Um, how do people, how do people feel about a 10 minute recess and we'll come back?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, let's take a 10 minute recess. Let's, let's be back, uh, just about 8:10. Dion, you'll stop. See, I see Robert, Nick, Dee, Karen, Brian, Nancy. Okay, we are all here, so let's start it again. Um, Dion, are we back from recess?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's pick up with the next account, which is department, excuse me, the next department, which is department number 420 miscellaneous charges and transfers. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for Department 420 in the departmental total of $861,350.
Second.
Discussion. Uh, Nick, I think you're talking, but you're on mute.
This is non-recurring account, right? Yeah, the 650, right?
Yes, yep.
I'd make a motion that we cut 30,000 off of this. We're all trying to get to a goal. We're just going to have to spend less. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry, line, what line?
Um, again, it's, uh, account 420, 370.
Thank you.
I'll second. Discussion.
Okay, I have a question for Cynthia.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, just, so I go through this in my mind every year that we started doing this, putting, um, money, but, but this year especially. And this is to Bob Koslowski. We keep building up that general fund and, and I understand that we want to pay cash.
But is there? This is going to die. Damn it. Oh, I'm sorry, geez.
Damn it, Nick. Right. So with the general fund, is it not possible to use that? So for example, let's just say hypothetically, and you know, Bob Manfred, I just, you know, don't, don't punch my square. But if we reduce that by $500,000, had 150,000 in capital non-recurring. However, is it not possible, Bob Koslowski, to transfer money from the general fund? Since I believe you said we have a good, goodly chunk that is, you know, kind of flexible because we have our AAA rating and it would be for a worthy town cause. What's possible in that, within that? Because there's going to be a lot of stuff on that capital non-recurring. And I just think, you know, if we do have something available in the general fund, why burden taxpayers with, um, that?
Well, Cynthia, if you remember a couple of years ago, in November, December timeframe, we transferred, we bought the fire truck and the sweeper. We paid cash for it during the course of the year and at the end of the year, we transferred money out of the general fund to pay for those assets.
Right. I'm saying to, to take 500 grand out of the capital non-recurring. So you don't start with the high number and then go to the higher number.
I mean, we were a couple of years ago, uh, five years ago, we were at 225,000 with this account. Uh, we cut it down to, by 500,000 down to 150, you're just going backwards. And if you, if you wind up, uh, next year and, uh, basically what you're doing is you're building in an increase, an automatic increase into the following tax year. That's all. You can do it, but, uh, it's going to be a burden the following year.
Yeah, well, this, this, you mean the following year, like 2023?
The next year. Just go, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if I can, if I can add to that, Bob is right. Uh, you, and Bob, there, there might even be a little bit of a problem, like moving money that way. It might be seen as just buying down the mill rate.
That's why I'm asking, uh, no, no, that's, I was specifically not buying, it, it wouldn't be seen that way because there would be the way to do it that would not imply that. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
You and I discussed that, Matt. We discussed that.
Right, but, uh, to Bob's main point though, I, I mean, we had a discussion on Tuesday night about how we've been trying for 10 years to get the highway account up to 900,000. And we went up not even there and then went backwards. You're going to spend years trying to put this back in. And in the meantime, when you have things like fire trucks come up, you'll have to borrow to, to do it.
For the record, I did not vote to cut the highway department last year because it's the only department I would never cut.
I know.
So.
But, but the board did and, I mean.
Right. I guess what I'm saying, just for the point of conversation, what I'm saying is maybe there are some things on that list. There could be a reprioritization of those items then for the capital non-recurring so that it's not whatever is in here now plus the other 650,000. That's what I'm saying. There needs to be a reprioritization and because nothing is going to appear on the ballot that I know of, although I think the firing range should, it's a little bit more. it's a little bit more murky. So.
Cynthia, we did get the list of the capital account, um, Matt provided that to us and I think Brad also published it. Is, is there something in there that you thought would be, should be reprioritized since we've had it in our possession for a while?
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know what you're implying, but, um, you know, that the, my trigger phrases are, you may remember, or it's in the report, but I will tell you this. I don't presume to know what the prioritization would be. I would presume that everyone who deals with that, mine is simply a question, a financial question that is there a, a possible reprioritization that would not, so that it would not consume the entire capital non-recurring? That's what I'm saying. So I do have pathways, Robert, but just maybe not specifically which items to, you know, accept or deny.
Fair enough.
Hey, Rob, just as a, as a reminder from Tuesday night, the list I put up, we, we're the top priority items and it came up to like one point nine million. Uh, but there's a lot more behind that, that I didn't put on the list, that, that, those priorities have already dropped.
It's, it's, this list is the, uh, big list.
Yes, that's correct.
And Cynthia, I, I, I don't think Robert implied anything. He asked a direct question.
Well, yeah.
The direct question was what, what items on that list would be deprioritized?
Right, and I, I would stand to reason that I would not be the expert in that way. I'm simply putting it out there for those who prioritize, since it's not me, would give it a think, that's all.
Sure.
No, and, and in prior years, Robert has said, you know, you have to have a pathway, you're not offering a pathway. So I thought that perhaps that was allusion to that, but perhaps not.
Well, the thing that I struggle with is just how much is on that list and I believe Matt, the Board of Selectmen and the department folks are the experts. And they told us that's what we need. You're, if I again continue to follow your suggestion, Bob K, I think again, Cynthia is looking for pathways, one is perhaps to use the fund balance in a way that the rating agencies won't see as buying down the mill rate. I thought you, Bob K, were planning on use, they're, by my calculation, so I say that because they're subject to error, right? I, I don't know this stuff as closely as you do, but by my calc, it looks like there's about two point six million of fund balance above what the rating agencies would require at twenty percent. I thought your intention was to use that fund balance to pay, uh, to pay some of the short-term debt incurred for the school project, thereby bonding less, thereby saving us debt service in future years. Is, you, you've talked to us about that on a couple, at a couple of the Board of Finance meetings, is that still your plan? Absolutely. You know, I've talked to, um, uh, Barry, our financial advisor, he thinks it's a great idea. Not many towns are able or are in the position to do that. And I think, uh, since, uh, you know, we have the bond on the band coming due in July, if we pay down the two point five, two point six on the band and just bond that much less, we're going to save a lot of interest going forward in the next twenty years. I would like to see that happen. We, you know, we need to discuss that right after we're pretty much finished with, uh, these sessions. Uh, and then I, I believe we got to have, uh, a town meeting to approve it.
So in terms of, for example, the gun range, um, that would be paid, how, that would be paid out of capital non-recurring, would that be bonded, would? And it's not going to be on the ballot, which it should be. I think. I know that it's part of the police station, so I don't even, we don't need to go there again, but, um, how would, how would that be paid for? Would that not be ba- bonded if you have a very low interest rate? And it's something that's going to be around for a hundred years.
Probably one point nine million dollars in the capital non-recurring. If you add the six fifty, we'll be up around, uh, two point five and it would be enough to accommodate what Matt had presented last week, uh, on, uh, the capital needs. There are other capital needs too that need to be addressed, but, um, that would certainly cover what was on that sheet of paper.
And, and I just want to make the point too, that there are, um, of course, there are things, the priorities and the department heads give the priorities and I understand that. But there's normal years and then there's COVID years that we don't even know what they are. So you know, that's, that's basically why I'm putting it out there like that.
But I, I, I get it, I understand it. What I, I think what this board has been able to do over the last years is kind of apply the finance basics, including I think one of the basics is in, in tough times and I think we all stipulate that these are tough times. The best approach is to reduce operating expenses, but to continue to invest in the things called, you know, whatever you call investments, capital items, repairs, so that capital assets don't waste. I, I think we should keep capital non-recurring where it is because of the long list of items that we have. And, and we've got a few more accounts that we'll have to look to and reduce operating expenses that way.
And you know what, Bob? I would go with that and I'd be a hundred percent on board with that if we got a little more momentum with cutting, which I mean, we have some accounts left, but you know, if we could make cuts commensurate with, uh, those capital needs, that would, uh, that would make me feel better. So just, you know.
I think the process we had talked about is when we get to the end of this, we, we would ask Bob where we came out.
Yeah, well, yeah, like we do.
And let's, and if, let's see how we feel about where we come out in the end.
Okay, no.
Nick's, uh, Nick's trying to dial in, I guess his, uh, he just sent me a text.
I just let, I just let a phone number in.
I'll tell him to redial because it seems like he cut himself off again.
Okay, yeah.
I'll tell, call again. Got it. Oh, there he is.
I'm on both.
You can hear you now, Nick.
As long as I'm not muted.
You're not muted.
Nick, what's your phone number? Is, does it end in three, two, two, one?
Yeah, yes.
Alright, so, yeah, we can see it.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to reduce Department four twenty account number three seventy by thirty thousand dollars. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
What were you?
I was a four. Sorry.
It was three, four, three, four it?
That seems to be the number.
Yep. So it failed. Alright.
Nick, you're in, right? Okay. Anything else for Department four twenty?
I've got both going. I'm muted on the phone because this laptop is going to die.
We can see you with the phone to your ear.
Alright, if nothing else on Department four twenty, back to the original motion, accepting the Board of Selectmen's recommendation with a departmental total of eight hundred and sixty one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, next, uh, next department, four thirty Senior Center. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal in the departmental total of two hundred forty eight thousand six hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. Robert, if you seconded that, you're on mute.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I want to be consistent with my, uh, earlier, uh, statement and motion. And I think again, the, uh, COVID effects are going to, uh, be a detriment to the activities of, um, the senior center. So I would like to reduce, um, three seventeen activities, uh, by ten thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Okay, looks like D is second. Discussion. Alright, no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Cynthia was the only one opposed.
Looks that way. Alright, so, um, we now need to do revised total. Revised total for Department four thirty would be two hundred thirty eight thousand six eighty nine. That's a motion, so Robert, could you second that?
Second.
All those in favor of the, just the additional, the addition, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So everybody voted yes on that?
I think it's just addition. Uh, Brian's got a question?
I just hope that as a board, we would give them the same, uh, courtesy as Parks and Rec, where if COVID is over, that they're able to come back to us and get the money reinstated for their programs.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's the intention.
Good point, Brian. Thank you for saying that.
Okay, next, next department, Department four thirty Library. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal in the departmental to, you know, departmental total of eight hundred ninety four thousand five hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, um, yeah, so this, this came in at zero percent, yay, Megan. Um, but while, while we're discussing things like programs and revenue and whatnot, I had some questions. I tried to text you in chat, Bob Kusowski, if you had answers to the questions that I had emailed you. And you said you would have them for the meeting and some of them I wanted to know for conversation purposes. Do you have that information?
Most of that information, that information, uh, supplies to, um, utilities. You were asking about.
There are five questions, so. And you said you'd have it for tonight, so I just wanted to know.
Questions, the aquarium, the Bethel hydrants and the Bethel water? Are you talking about those questions?
How much revenue would be derived from taxes represented by the proposed mill rate? What does the proposed revenue, I mean?
Nine ninety nine.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Twenty three. I, I got it in front of me, so you don't have to read it to me.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, no, you.
The, the local sources of revenue is down nineteen percent at this point. The biggest driver in that is our uh, interest income going from five hundred down to, uh, two hundred thousand dollars. The average house, I mean, that's an easy calculation, two seventeen times the current mill rate, so that's seven thousand three twenty two.
Right, I, what I, my question really was, why are we still using two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars as a median?
Matt mentioned that in one of the emails earlier in the day. So.
So, we're in public now, but I send it out to everyone at that call?
We'll change it at that time. Cynthia, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little confused, which isn't.
I'm trying, I, these are questions that I had asked earlier and I wanted to understand some things because now we're coming up to, um, some departments that I just wanted to know. I, he could have emailed them to me. I just wanted to have them.
I got, so you, you want them before we deliberate thirty five and now?
You know what? I honestly just want to ha- I wanted to have them be by tonight, so it doesn't matter now because I didn't have it by tonight. It's okay. I mean, I know where we are now, so it's alright.
Any, any other discussion on the library?
I just want to congratulate Megan for doing innovative things and, uh, programs and coming in at a zero percent. I think it's pretty great. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation for Department four thirty five, the library and the department total amount of eight hundred ninety four thousand five hundred and three dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Uh, next department, um, excuse me, yeah, debt service four forty. Make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation in debt service for a total amount of five million seven hundred eighty one thousand six hundred and thirty eight dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Nick, you're on the phone, got it. Uh, so Dion, you got that? I think it was seven ayes. Alright, next, um, next department, Department four fifty, Board of Education. I'll make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's recommendation in the departmental total of forty nine million four hundred fifty dollars and eight, four hundred and fifty and eighty eight dollars. Try that again without somebody looking through it. Forty nine million four hundred fifty thousand eighty eight dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Alright. I, um, I'm going to make a motion. You know, when we started this discussion Tuesday, I think we had a target that was in mind for all the members of the Board of Finance. And that target was to get below an increase of, an increase in mill rate of two percent. And we knew that that required at least six hundred thousand dollars of cuts. We're not there. So I'm going to make a motion for discussion to reduce the four fif- four fifty account by five hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, Bob, I would just add, can you, you hear me?
Yes.
I think there's plenty of federal money coming, so I think with any grants, I think they can make it up. Um, and I think this is reasonable. I would like to see more because of the grants coming up, but this town cannot afford an over two, two and a half to three percent increase in taxes. And the Board of Ed is, is a huge number. I would love to give as much money that this town can afford, but I don't think right now people can afford that kind of tax increase.
I, I would like, um, well, first of all, I, it has to be under two percent for me to get my head around it, but I don't know if I, this is the way I do it, but I would like to amend that motion and make it, um, six hundred thousand from the Board of Ed and it's for a couple of reasons. Um, one is I, I really do think they're getting more federal money and, uh, something, a- and this is something that it just, you know, that has been bothering me, but I'm just going to say it. Uh, there are peo- there are different Boards of Finance members in different towns that I've spoken to and something that was, um, I was curious about was how those S R grants, how they were apportionated to private schools and the public schools. And each one of them, I think it was hand in ledgered, I have them written down. They said it was, uh, it was based on the free meals, the subsidized meal programs. And I just don't know if that is correct. I think it is. And I, there's something about that that bothers me. And it bothers me because I remember thinking to myself, why is there such a, there, there seemed to be such a rush to make sure people were, I guess they, you were getting money to provide meals so that you could get more money than private schools. That's, you know, I'm just saying that out there. It's nothing, I'm not saying anything personal. I do believe that you can, you know, make, make do and succeed with six hundred thousand dollars less than your operating budget. But I just wanted to say that, that was a concern for me.
Sorry, did somebody second that, that motion?
On, on Cynthia's motion?
Yes.
I, I would second it for the discussion, yeah.
No, I discussed it. Sorry.
Let me, let me just throw, uh, uh, just a point of order out there, just so make, make everybody, uh, make sure they're clear. There's an amendment on the floor to reduce by five hundred, then there's an amendment to the amendment for six hundred. So when you vote, you'll have to reel it back twice.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. I guess what I would add, just because of. Thank you, thank you, Matt. I guess what I would add, just because we've heard that folks believe there's going to be federal grants, I wouldn't bet just yet. Based on what I have been following in the discussions of the bill, there's tremendous uncertainty as to where they're gonna land on the state aid. And so, for our purposes, to the extent you think it's important in your decisioning, I, I, I would suggest there's no certainty that we're gonna get more state aid, or certainly, certainly no certainty that Connecticut's gonna get more federal aid to, to be able to support schools and others. The, the other, just the second point is, remember this, what we're talking about today is for presentation to a public. So, this is, what we're looking to come to is a presentation to the public for a meeting on March twenty-second, Monday, where they'll be able to give us their thoughts on whether we made the mark, or overshot the mark, or undershot. So, I just want to make sure that those two points kind of as addition to Matt's comment on process.
Just the other side of that, Bob Manfreda, is that, you know, my, my perspective is that I think there's more of a chance of getting federal grants right now, or federal relief money right now than there are for, you know, programs to miraculously come to life. So, you know, there are different perspectives, and I listen to a lot of stuff too pursuant to state aid and federal aid. So, you know, we just get, we just are interpreting it differently.
That's, that's right. All right.
Um, Bob, may I, may I comment?
Oh, I think technically the answer is no, but I don't think, I don't think anybody would object.
No.
Well, if she, if she's answering a question, a direct question, I, I think that's fine. Was there a direct question that someone needed an answer from the superintendent?
It wasn't me, Nick. It wasn't her. Um, it was, I believe it is a question or a misunderstanding that the money that we're getting, that we know we're getting with the most recent ESER funds cannot be used to supplant your operating budget. So, and as we explained in our presentation, that ESER funds are being used for positions we would not, we would not have in our operating budget, but we really need right now, especially with COVID, for our social and emotional needs, for our math intervention, for our kids. We told you how our data is looking with, with kids losing ground in literacy, but most, more, moreover in math. And so, those funds were allocated over a two-year period to fill that hole. So, if you take five hundred thousand out of our operating budget, knowing that like eighty-five percent of our operating budget is, is salaries, that probably translates into, I don't know, eight, ten positions, five, six, seven, eight positions, depending on where they are. So, I, so I just wanted to correct the notion that, that it's okay to take that money away from us because we can just fill it in with, with grant funds. That's my, not my understanding of the grant funds, that they're not supposed to be used to supplement your operating budget, that they're for COVID-related needs. So, I just wanted to just throw that out there.
You're, and you're absolutely right, Melanie, and I, I, you know, maybe I, I implied that that solely was, that I meant those two grants or the ESER grants, but there's also relief money, reimbursement money that comes through for COVID-related operating costs. So, I believe that that money, that there will be money coming through for that. But also, I've said this before, I can't make you do anything. I can't, you know, we have no purview over your, your budget, eighty-five percent of it. But I'll say it again, get the unions to come back. You can have your whole, your whole budget intact, your whole operating budget. If, if people voluntarily or try to get the unions back to the table and just, you know, up a raise if you're making more than, you know, seventy grand a year. And that's just, you know, I'm just talking what people say to me, you know, because I represent certain people, and this is how they, they feel. So, you know, we're all in this together, apparently, and, and I'm saying that, not trying to be snarky, I'm saying it's, it's a, it's a valid thought, you know? And I'll just keep it out there.
Brian, you had a question? You're mute.
Just, I guess if Dr. Carver or maybe Terry will be able to tell me, in terms of the total increase in your budget excluding what you guys were proposing to do with the grant, about, what is it, one point two million, Terry, comes out in salaries on the increase? Am I correct or am I incorrect?
Probably close, Brian, but Terry could tell you.
I, I have to say, I didn't really understand the question. Our increase, other than salaries and benefits.
I wanted to know what the increase in salary and benefits was.
The increase in salary and benefits is, is almost all of the increase we showed. The, other than that, is about thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Right.
So, you're saying that eighty-five percent of your budget is based on salary and, and.
It is almost eighty-six percent of salaries and benefits.
I understand. So, but you're saying the increase of one point four eight million was all salary and benefits?
Excluding thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. And then, I know you guys said.
And change. It's like a couple hundred.
I'm just trying to get the numbers straight in my head. And then you said you guys captured about a hundred thousand dollars in savings.
Right. Right. Correct.
So, if we took the five hundred number per se, minus, I mean, you're looking at the, the actual decrease is like three hundred sixty-one thousand? Is my math correct?
To the salaries and benefits remaining, yeah. Well, to the budget, yeah.
Yes, to the budget.
The overall budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I may have just administratively kind of cleared up a couple minutes. We've got the six hundred thousand dollar second modified motion. So, on that, those in favor of the modified motion to reduce the five fifty Board of Education number by six hundred thousand dollars, please signify, people in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Neon, you have that?
So, my yeses were Nick and Cynthia?
Yes.
Right.
Right, back to the first amended motion, five hundred thousand dollars. Any further? Any further discussion on that motion? Nick?
Oh, I think when Brian just ran through the numbers, it looks like the schools would have to find three hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of savings. And so, I would ask Dr. Carver and Melanie and Terry, you know, tell us about that. What does that look like?
I mean, I don't know how to respond. We, we have, you just heard that it's mostly in salaries. And so, it's gonna impact people likely, and we haven't even had a chance to process it. So, I mean, it's very, very hard to give an off-the-cuff answer to that. You know, we run very lean in Bethel. You know, we have, we are, we spend about two, two thousand dollars, close to two hundred thousand dollars a kid below the state average. And so, I don't know what to say. I mean, I'm just, I honestly am speechless right now. I don't know, Melanie and Terry, if you want to add anything?
I'm also speechless. It's not, it's a big cut.
It's not something I can answer off the cuff. Like, you know, if you had said, what would five hundred look like? We could have looked at it, but, um.
First time we're hearing it.
Well, it's the right time in the process, like I said, right? And so, you guys can think about it. Maybe, my guess is, there'll be questions at the public hearing. That should be two weeks from now, so. And any other discussion? All right. Now, again, just for a reminder, the motion is to reduce Department 450 by five hundred thousand. Brian?
I just have a quick question, and it's just, you know, thinking outside the box a little bit. If, you know, you're, Dr. Carver, you're saying that this is gonna result in however many positions lost. You know, I know, we can't put you on the spot here, you know, sitting here at a meeting without the numbers in front of you. Would you prefer a cut like this to come out of the maintenance account and use more of your unexpended fund account?
Yes.
Or is that not really an option?
No, I, we, it's something that we talked about at the last meeting, I thought. I think Nick had a good idea. I believe he brought it up. Is it, was it Nick?
Yep.
Yeah, yes. And I think it's something I, we have communicated, both Ms. O'Brien and I have communicated that to Bob Manfreda. It would, it would be much better to do that.
How much do you have in your unexpect, expended account?
Well, the, the, first of all, the four sixty account, the total of the four sixty account is four hundred and fifty thousand. So, that doesn't give you all five hundred.
I'm not saying, I'm not looking for all five hundred. I'm just trying to figure out how much you have in unexpended funds.
Seven, seven forty-nine, something like that.
It is seven forty-nine.
No, see. Right. So, we, I, yes, we would much rather consider that. I mean, it's still gonna create a shortfall. I think that was a discussion last week to over the next year's budget, but certainly, it would be, it would be, I, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Melanie or Terry, but we would, we would rather talk about those types of options.
I mean, there'd have to be some level of cut, Brian, because you can't, you can't create a future hole where you're, from the get-go, you're five hundred thousand in the hole. It's no different than the cap and non-discussion you had, you had an hour ago.
Right, but it's also the same, and again, I understand what you're doing. In two years, when federal funds run out, we have a hole in the positions that we've hired through a grant.
Right.
Correct?
Well.
So, I'm just trying to figure out how during this really tough budget season.
Right.
How do we do it to minimize damage this year to your ability to provide, you know, the quality education to all the kids in Bethel? That's, that's just my question. I'm just trying to think outside the box before we take a vote.
Right. And I think, and I think part of the conversation had been looking exactly that. So, to minimize it on the operational side, which would have much more of a significant, significant impact on what we do with kids every day. So.
Yeah.
I mean, if we looked at it from another perspective, from the four, four sixty, to your point, I think it would be, it would be, it would have a much less impact.
It, about a hundred thousand worth, for sure.
You spoke about it in the past.
I have.
Yeah, we talked.
About Nick, I just want.
Oh, sorry.
Of course, Cynthia, whoever.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something quick. Um, so, to that point, which didn't dawn on me, but I, what if it was split between them with the lesser amount coming out of the four fifty, would that be something, or would you prefer to?
Listen, we don't like any of it, but yes.
Let's say if you had to, you know, the gun is to your head, and you had to choose to.
Right.
Or four sixty.
Yeah, definitely.
Squad were hanging.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
Bob, do you think we should just table this vote right now and go to the four sixty and see where we end up or no?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I, I'm just asking, would everyone be agreeable to that?
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, and I wish I had Brian's diplomatic skills, because more people would like me, but I don't.
Okay. Let us rescind the mess of the motion. And now, let's move to the four sixty. Okay, I will make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen's proposal for the four sixty department in a departmental total of four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
We're talking about the four sixty account?
Yeah.
Now, I just want to make, I just want to make sure I'm on the, I'm on, I'm on the right page.
Yep.
So, that, that account is made up of recurring contractual services, open accounts that town maintenance and our custodians can go and get supplies. And then, the third piece is identified projects. And, and in what we presented, the identified projects were about eighty-one thousand. I, I just want to make you aware, because I don't know if recurring contracts are something you want us going to the.
No, I'm not.
One percent account for.
Recurring, recurring contracts accounted for how much?
Well, the, the part that's not recurring is about eighty-one, so, I mean, you could round it up to a hundred, but.
I think that, that's the number that you all quoted last time, right? That in the four sixty, that's in the kind of nature of capital items. It's about one hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
The one percent fund, one or two percent fund, depending on how you want to think about it, either the annual or total cap, that, as this board has worked with the Board of Ed, is supposed to be used for surprises, typically in the form of capital items and opportunities. I think the example on the opportunities, which I think predates our board, would be like grants, filing fees or whatever. So, there's an argument that one hundred thousand dollars of items in the four sixty are of the nature or very similar to the nature of those items typically used to be paid or to be set aside for one percent.
And remember, the four sixty is included in the town side budget, so it actually changes your, the town overall percentage increase versus the Board of Ed overall percentage increase.
Nick, you're on mute if you're talking.
You, you couldn't hear me, Bob?
No, Nick, Nick, it looked like Nick was talking, but he was on mute.
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead, Terry.
No, that was all. I was just, I was just giving you back, back information for making, you know, for the decision-making.
And I, I'm just a little confused, and I'm sorry. So, the whole point of me trying to move this here was trying to soften the blow on your education budget.
Right.
I mean.
Right, right.
And we're saying that only eighty-one thousand can be used from four sixty.
No, you can use more. And I defer to Dr. Carver as to how she wants to do it. I'm just saying that, I was just explaining the components of the four sixty, and also that the four sixty is part of the town side budget, so it, it, right. Overall, when we put numbers out at the town meeting, it will lower the town side overall increase. Right. Board of Ed overall increase.
And my, my point, perhaps maybe in articulately, is that if we're looking to supplement or subsidize with the one slash two percent proceeds, it is just the one hundred thousand that will be of consistent nature. It is just the one hundred thousand that will be of consistent nature. How that fund has been used.
The statute allows more flexibility, but the spirit of the agreement between the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance is as Bob Manfreda described it.
Right. And the, and the agreement as it's written has more flexibility.
Yes.
The spirit of it is exactly as Bob Manfreda, um, defined it, but we, we did check with our attorneys about it also.
Yes.
Is there any way to get from Brad, perhaps, um, what the, based on what we've done so far, to get sort of a tally of where we stand right now, even before proposing cuts to the education budget? Either one, the four fifty or four sixty? Would that be an idea?
So far, the reduction is a hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
How does that affect the percentage for, for the town increase?
Brad, I, I don't, why do I, I have a different number.
I do too.
Uh, maybe I missed something. I have twenty thousand for the police.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand for parking rack, thirty thousand for van, ten thousand for senior center.
I guess that's right. Yeah. Yep. There you go.
And so that means the town with the Board of Ed maintenance account and debt would be up three point four nine percent when it had been up three point nine nine percent.
Okay, Bob Manfreda, what if, um, if you put it like a tentative cut in the four sixty and then saw that? Would that, would you, could we know that? Like, let's say, what, what would, what would the proposal be to take out of the four sixty?
Sure.
And then get the.
I got you to benchmark, versing near into it.
Yes.
But we talked about to get to two percent increase in bill rate. We need six hundred thousand dollars in cuts. To get to roughly one point seven five increase in tax, we need seven hundred and fifty thousand in cuts. And if we want to kind of go down to the one point five percent increase in tax, not right, not, not spend, but mill rate tax. We need nine hundred and fifty thousand of cuts. So to benchmark against that. Brad, again, I'm sorry, uh, we're at one sixty right now?
Correct.
So I, I don't even, you know, I don't know where that, that's probably still very close to the Board of Selectmen's proposal, which is a two point eight six percent increase in tax. So we need to, to benchmark to get to a two percent increase in tax, we need another four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Brad, check my math, please.
Correct.
Okay.
So Bob Manfreda, definitely, we had identified a hundred as health insurance, which would be out of our operating budget.
Correct.
So the discussion is really the allocation of the other four hundred. So I would defer to Melanie and Dr. Carver on preference.
And entirely, like to your point, right? This is very difficult. Um, there's, it's not a question of supporting anything. This is the question of what our feedback from citizens have told us they think is affordable. And, and we wouldn't, right, lies always, we don't have the right to. But we, we wouldn't tell, give you suggestions as to where to do what you need to do. We, I think, just come up with a number that we think folks would tell us they can afford at a public, or tell us they can afford more or less. So you, that one hundred, that one hundred's included, I'm assuming that one hundred's going to be included in whatever number we call it.
But Bob, what are our totals right now? How much have we cut totals to date?
About one hundred and sixty thousand.
So we're at one sixty now?
Dee? So I'm wondering, I know, I know the one percent fund is, the spirit is different than the potential legal uses. Um, you guys are smarter on that stuff than I am, but I am wondering how much specifically we rolled into that after the last fiscal year or recently. And I'm thinking it was something like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a little bit more.
Three eighty-five, eight thirty-four.
Really sick.
Three eighty-five, eight thirty-four.
I mean.
In a, in an unusual year, but we do always, I, I mean, we've never been over. We do always have some money left at the end of the year.
Well, my question is, can we, that's a very healthy one percent fund. Can we use those monies that were rolled over from, you know, the savings for this past year, um, to offset what we need to cut to get to under two percent?
Not yes, on the capital stuff, not on the operations.
So we can take it out.
I, I disagree, Bob.
That's the spirit of the agreement we.
You're right. There's, there's two, there's two, there's two layers to this. You're correct. The spirit of the agreement and what actually the losses and what you're.
My two forty-eight, two forty-eight A is very broad.
Right, but, but the agreement with the Board of Finance is also written in a fairly broad manner. I a hundred percent agree with you. The spirit of the agreement was exactly what you said. Um, but the way it's actually written, it says for, Melanie, you reviewed it also, right? It says for operating expenses.
I, I think definitely there's flexibility in the statute and, and when you think about it, the parties to the agreement can modify an agreement. So if there was an agreement between the Board of Finance and um, Board of Education, then we're in a position to change that. But the statute definitely says, um, that's for educational purposes, which would include, um, what we're proposing to, um, help with the four sixty account.
Oh, and.
And anything, and actually any, at, at any age.
I, I think the biggest issue actually is next year's budget. I think that's what Terry and Bob Kozlowski and Bob Manfreda, I think that's your concern, right? Because you're just, you're extending a problem into the following year, right?
We, we already, we already have a five hundred thousand dollar hole on road construction.
Right. No, I, I fully appreciate that.
More debt service, another two hundred thousand in debt service. So we're going to start with a seven hundred thousand dollar hole.
Right.
Not, not that next year's issue necessarily drives this year's, but that's your points in our mind.
Right. So, um, I mean, I, it, it's got to be a balance between both.
You know, look, I, I, I think it's a good idea, Brian, to try to, to try to work this. I, within the spirit of the, the agreement, as has been applied in the past, at least in the four sixty account, I think we're limited to about one hundred thousand. And I think, I don't, Bob K, you want to weigh in. Uh, you're, you're, you and Brad are the keeper of the town side. How do you feel about creating that type of, uh, a hole for this three or twenty-three?
Yeah, it's like, it's like we talked about before. I mean, you, you're building an, an automatic increase into the budget for the following year, you know, um. I can understand the hundred thousand, you know, and, and maybe, uh, you know, considering I know the agreement, the MOU that you have between the Board of Ed and the town, uh, talks about capital items, but you know, the, the fact it does uh, allow for these funds for other purposes too, the operating account. So maybe you can use another hundred for the operating account, you know, and try to mitigate the, the impact.
Dee?
And isn't it also true that next year we would expect our revenues to be more back in line with what we typically expect? I mean, we're down significantly this year in terms of interest, or maybe the interest isn't going to come back. I don't know. But I mean, I would think that our revenues would be more in line with what we would expect, have expected.
The interest is another question. I mean, that depends on what happens with the feds and everything else with inflation, but, um, that three hundred thousand cut is huge. You know, but, but we're not down six or seven hundred thousand in revenue. We're down like two seventy-five because there are certain items that are up at this point. So, uh, next year, you know, past COVID, I think we're going to be in a lot better shape, except for maybe the interest side. I think that's going to take a long time to start to work its way back up again.
Just for interest rate, right? I think it was, what's the, today's Thursday? I think it was Tuesday, Chair Powell said that his plan is to keep short-term interest rates at zero through twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Brian?
To, to the revenue point, the revenue's down, but we still are going to have a fund balance at the end of the budget. We're still going to have a surplus. So, you know, I don't know if the revenues are up next year. I mean, it just means we're going to have a larger surplus to put into the fund balance or however we choose to spend it. Because, you know, I think you said the revenues are down two hundred seventy-five thousand, but we're still expecting between five and six hundred thousand leftover to be used, however it's decided to be used when we close out the books. Am I wrong?
No, you're right. I mean, right now, our collection rate for, as of the end of February is about one point three percent higher than it was last year. It's actually a little bit more because Wells Fargo made the April payment ahead of time, but we subtracted that out in the calculation. If you use that, I mean, we're well over last year's number, you know?
Yeah, I just, just my point was, it doesn't really matter. It just matters on what number we agree on a budget. I mean, the revenue can be up as long as it's not down. You know, to the point where we're pulling from our fund balance, but that's not the case this year and probably won't be the case next year.
No, I mean, if we pull from the fund balance, we're pulling it for capital items.
I'm saying if, if we were that far off on revenue where we were in the hole, right? Where we, we budgeted for a million in revenue and we got.
No.
So that's all.
So to, just to understand the, what you're proposing is that if you reduce the four sixty by a hundred thousand, then we, the Board of Ed would use the, our unexpended funds account for those, those i- items that we had intended to spend out of the four sixty, correct? Right.
So there's a lot of interrelated consequences and factors, but maybe we can kind of work through at least an initial. Um, I believe we've got a motion on the floor for the four sixty account, four fifty. What about, I make a motion that just to keep the discussion going. Make a motion to amend that amount downward to three fifty. With the expectation that the boards, Board of Ed and Board of Finance work together to, in effect, use that one slash two percent fund balance to replace the one hundred thousand dollars, this is a wrong motion. Uh, one hundred thousand dollars that would have otherwise been spent by Bob G on his list of improvements.
Second.
We'll, we'll abbreviate that, Deion.
I hope so.
I've got it.
As a point of order, what, what account are you, uh?
Four sixty.
Four sixty, minus three hundred, three fifty, right? Minus hundred thousand.
Thousand.
To bring it down, bring it down to three fifty, the one hundred thousand being a rough estimate of the eighty-one that we know. Assuming there's some more.
Okay, Bob, I just asked a question. I, I thought I saw Bob, Bob, Jim, Chairman Arrow here. Are, are any of the roof contracts or any of those contracts on the two new schools where I believe, do we get any warranty, like a year warranty?
I even know that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bob. I see you.
No, no, you, you, no, you're right. We, we do.
We do.
So is that something where we could find savings and start them again next year? Or do you need them? Like, do we not get a guarantee of a year of leak proof and whatnot?
Well, Brian, there's, uh, there's a small component that is, um, required by us to maintain.
Oh, on the new buildings? I'm just talking about the new buildings.
Is there something with the grant that you have certain things you have to do, Bob?
There's no grant. Um, so.
I mean, reimbursement rather, like the eligible cost. I'm sorry, that's what I.
No, 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 no. And that wouldn't apply to Cynthia because it's, it, that's only during construction. But I think, Brian, if I'm not wrong, you're asking is for the new buildings, are there, are there any contracted maintenance associated with them?
Like, I know Bob has roof contracts on all the schools where if there's a leak, you know, they come out and they fix it. If there's whatnot. Do we need those on the new building, Bob? Or is the first year covered under some sort of warranty from the company that built it? That's what I'm asking.
The first year would be covered. But then, but then to Cynthia's point, um, we do have to, we do have to add a, uh, maintenance. We're required now to have a maintenance contract on the books for playground. Um, so that there's, there's ups and downs depending on the, the changes. But yes, some things with the two new renovated buildings will have warranties for the first year, which might help a bit, yes.
Did we realize, realize those savings in this budget or?
I, I believe they did, right, Terry?
Yeah. Right.
Well, I, and I'm, I thought too that, um, I thought Bob G never had any shortages of ways to spend the money.
No, he doesn't.
No, never. Never. So are you working on the four sixty item? Or can I ask a question? Bob Manfredo or not?
Well, was it, let me answer your first question. Yeah, we are working, yes, we're working on the four sixty and there is a motion on the floor to reduce, an amended motion on the floor to reduce the four fifty to three fifty. Yeah, I can't. So just setting it up like that, go ahead to, what's your second question?
My second question is, is a separate question. It has to do with the, the one percent account is supposed to be used for capital type items. And one of the capital type items that's in that list of the one point nine million are replacing two rooftop HVAC units at the high school. So it is possible that part of it, some of it could come from the one percent account to cover that. If we, if we were to take some money from the one percent account and put it towards the rooftop units, do you have any capital items in the town budget? Um, and Brian mentioned one earlier being the police car. That could then, there'd be room for the police car to be able to be covered by cap and non.
I'm not sure I follow. Let me repeat it to see if I did. I think what you were asking is there capacity in capital non-recurring to absorb capital accounts to free up either one, two percent or elsewhere?
Yes, because I know you don't want to reduce your contribution to cap and non. But if you have a, a capital item that is of an expenditure in your budget, if that's not really creating, I don't know if that's creating a hole or not though for you. If it is, then it doesn't help. But, um.
My, of the list.
Are you saying like, if we need a police car? And let's just say the SR, SRO uses it, you could pay for that from your one.
No, she's, no, I'm saying we, it's one of the items that's in the one point nine million dollars to be covered by cap and non dollars is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure.
On HVAC.
Related to the board.
So do you guys pay for your own HVAC?
If I paid for my own or part of my own.
If you paid fifty thousand out of your HVAC.
Right.
That gives us fifty thousand to buy a police car.
Right.
Out of capital non-recurring. I see where you're going.
That's what I'm saying, but could that, would that just create a, does that also just create a hole, which I'm not, I'm not looking to do?
I think what Matt has told us, the Board of Selectmen has told us, is there's a long list of items that are fighting law for that capital non-recurring movement. Right? There's the, the one million nine twenty-one, there's a fire truck. And the rest of the list.
All right, well, do we have a motion, Bob, on anything?
Yeah, yeah, let's, again, let's see if we can kind of.
Get going.
parse through it a little bit. On amended motion, Department four sixty, revised total, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be a one hundred thousand dollar reduction. Motion's been made, seconded, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by. All right, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, I think a last nay, Lauren, it looked like that. All right, so.
I'm sorry, was that seven yeses?
Yeah, yes.
So, that was a hundred thousand out of four sixty, is that correct?
On the four sixty and the boards, in in this instance, Board of Ed and Board of Finance will work together to use the one slash two percent fund to supplement that one hundred thousand. Any anymore on the four sixty in advance of moving to the four fifty? All right, so, just to level set, we now have reduced the budget expenses by two hundred and sixty thousand. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Two hundred and sixty thousand.
Plus the insurance savings.
Well, yeah. To be included in whatever happens to four fifty, right? But that's a good point. Let's let's say you assume it's just one hundred to four fifty. That's three hundred and sixty. That probably gets us uh, just a little bit more than halfway to two percent. So, it's probably a two point five percent. Let's call it a two point four percent increase in taxes. Assuming we take, we go back to the four fifty and take just one hundred thousand. If we still all believe what we said going into this Tuesday, that that's not enough. But, you know, let me ask, do people think differently? Do they have more data, different feelings on Tuesday night?
Bob, where are we at with four fifty? We we never made any motion there, right? Or are we?
That's right. We we did not make any.
Right, right.
We didn't make any, but.
So, we just, we just cut a hundred, a hundred out of four sixty and we're back at four fifty now, right?
That's right. And unfortunately, the numbers are the same, so there might be confusion, but 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 we also, as Melanie highlighted, we know we can take one hundred out of four fifty because of insurance.
The health savings, right? Yeah, I got you.
That one hundred plus the cuts made so far of two sixty gives us a total, and again, Bob Brad correctly, gives us a total of three sixty so far. Well, would give us a total of three sixty.
Are we saying three sixty out of four fifty? Is that is that your?
I'm sorry, I'm I'm being articulate. We have two sixty out of the accounts that we have already considered, right?
Oh, right, right, right.
We did the uh, one hundred out of Park and Rec, the twenty out of police, the ten out of the senior center, uh, and the thirty out of three ninety. Those add up to two sixty. And we're saying that we know there's a one hundred pickup in four fifty. If that was to be it, it's the two sixty plus the one hundred to get to three sixty.
So, you're at two thirty four, Bob.
Two point three four.
Yep.
That's a two, that would be a two point three four increase in tax. Brian, I'm sorry, I've been random.
All right, just before we, you know, vote on whatever we're going to cut from the Board of Ed, you know, I felt that there were some lines that were brought up previously that could have brought us down almost fifty thousand. That I don't think are really that big a detriment when you look at the overall grand scheme of things. I think that if the Board of Ed is willing to purchase part of the boiler, uh, the whatever they need, or was it a boiler or you guys after HVAC? Yeah, you have to replace your HVAC if they're willing to chip in for that and we're able to purchase some other items. You know, last year we bought a police car through capital nonrecurring. It wasn't that detrimental. I mean, remember the police department budget seemed so high just because they had that, you know, expired contract, right? With the nine percent, you know, over whatever it was. So, I mean, that's a way to think outside of the box and try and reduce any collateral damage and still, you know, come in with a budget that's a, you know, a little bit under two.
So.
I don't know what people think about.
Brian, can I ask you, the HVAC for BHS is on the capitalist for three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, three twenty five, yeah.
So, exactly what, I'm I'm not sure I understand how you're.
If if they paid, let's say, let's say, police car costs forty six thou, let's say fifty, just for argument's sake, just to make it very simple math. If they agreed to use one percent of that three fifty, they were going to get put fifty thousand. So, that means we have to use three hundred thousand out of capital nonrecurring rather than three fifty. That's an additional fifty thousand savings on our side. You know, we can get that police car. The police department still gets a police car. You know, we paid for one of them last year out of capital nonrecurring and it's fifty thousand dollar pickup right there. Or whatever the number is. Bob, what's the number on a police car? You know better than I do. Or Steve, are you still here?
Forty four thousand in total with the, you know, the equipment. It was less than fifty. And and the.
Yeah, I I'm still here.
Yeah, Steve, the the, is it forty four thousand?
Uh, no, the total was, it's forty thousand, Brian.
Forty thousand for a car?
Yeah, I just want to add something, though. Um, you've already, but I've already been cut a car already down to three.
We're not talking about cutting your car, Steve. We're talking about. Buy it from a different.
No, no, no. I started with four. I've been cut a car the last four years.
Right.
Now you're talking about cutting another car.
No, no, we're not talking about cutting.
Not talking about cutting a car. You're going to get the car. We're just going to buy it out of capital nonrecurring.
My point is, is I may need two cars from capital nonrecurring this year because we're behind the eight ball again.
The the board is so. Right now, you have three that we're paying for out of our budget.
Correct.
Three that were left in the budget.
And hopefully, we can make it through the year with only needing three. What my point is, is we're getting behind the eight ball and we might need to come back to you for that fourth this year. I'm not saying it's a definite, but you, now you keep on just pushing the can down the road when, like I said, we didn't cut a car the last four years.
There are a lot of departments that are behind the eight ball and that way I understand what you're saying, but to Brian's point, I mean, this is a way to.
Yeah. I I get it. I get it. But what I'm saying, though, is we're probably going to need four cars this year, not three. Even though you cut it down to three, I'm going to probably have to come back to you and ask for a fourth this year.
And Park and Rec may need to come back and ask for money for their.
Let me just, Steve, we didn't cut a car out. That came to us with.
I understand, but it was cut from from the police commission's budget. And I also want to remind everybody how much money we make with these cars every year. We start having cars down, we're not going to make that money.
Um, I I don't know how we got back to the police department budget. Can we get back to four fifty?
Yeah, look, I I I like the phraseology, thinking outside the box. The challenge is math doesn't kind of work that way. Um, right now, we've got a long list of items that are all teed up for what's in capital nonrecurring. Like more, more than what's available. So, it's not like we have excess capacity there unless Matt, the Board of Selectmen and the departments come back to us and say, eh, we're just, you know, being aggressive. And when I look at the list, a lot, a lot of these things have been here for a while. And the list does not include the aerial truck. Right? And we know, I mean, you know, because of the good work Matt did with the fire commission, um, and setting it up so that that fire commission could advise the Board of Selectmen, we want some time on the fire, on the aerial truck. But my, you know, I think they told us three years. So, we.
Right, Bob, good, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's just, it's another five hundred thousand dollars a year. And I know we've talked about borrowing, right? But here's the deal, we're borrowing for these small items. If we cannot afford paying for it, we can't afford paying for it with interest on top. It's kind of that.
If 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 I can add something on the four fifty, thank God, they got that million dollar grant. And then there's still another million dollar of new spending, so there's two million. I mean, we just, you you know, the Board of Ed is, is a huge part of this town budget. And we can't go to the to taxpayers and ask for a two and a half to three percent increase. So, I don't know where else we go from here.
Well, again, I I'm not commenting on what you're saying, Nick. I'm just trying to benchmark for us. Right now, if we include the one hundred thousand from the four fifty, we've got three hundred and sixty thousand of cuts. That's a two point three four percent increase in tax. I have not, well, I can't say. I believe subject to what you all think, a two point three four percent tax doesn't increase in tax. Doesn't meet the hurdle of having a sporting chance of passing at refereeing. So, I I think we need to cut more. But that's, that's one of seven.
I agree.
Two of seven.
I agree with you.
What are the other Board of Finance members?
I agree. I don't think we're going to come anywhere close to what you're targeting, honestly. We got to figure it out.
Oh, how much do we need to cut to get to like a one eight five, a one nine? What's the number?
We would have to take three fifty out Board of Education.
In addition.
Get just under two.
Would that be in addition to the one hundred proposed for the? Okay.
That would be one hundred insurance and two fifty in addition.
Okay.
Well, um, hold on, let me, I'm not following that number, Robert, and it just could be.
Hey, Brian, what, seven hundred thousand in total gets you to one eighty four?
Okay, there you go. We are at three sixty, which includes the one hundred. If we want to go to one eighty four, just a simple math is we need another three hundred and forty thousand. That would revise my motion made to begin this debate. It would revise that motion from a five hundred thousand dollar cut to a four forty cut.
No.
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 Because you already took a hundred out of the four sixty.
I I I think, I think the math works out that if we took uh, three fifty include, that includes the hundred thousand, that will get us down to uh, one point nine eight. So, that the total would be six ten.
That would be two sixty in cuts so far. Plus what, Robert?
So, the total would be uh, six ten with a uh, one hundred out of four sixty, three fifty out of four fifty, so that's four fifty. And then uh, we have another one sixty on top of that, so that's six ten. And six ten gets us just below the two point.
Three hundred and forty thousand more cut based on the, what we went in tonight's estimated revenue map, get you to one nine nine. Subject to change because we do need.
Okay, fair enough. So, that would mean three forty, three hundred and forty thousand out of the four fifty account to get to one point nine nine.
So, I'd like to amend the uh, amend the proposal right now from uh, taking out five hundred to taking out um, three hundred and forty fourth, three hundred and forty thousand.
And just as a technical, as a technical matter, I don't think that's an amendment. I I think that's our motion.
Oh, I thought there was a motion on the table, sorry. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Three hundred and forty thousand?
Yes.
And that's inclusive of, inclusive of the one hundred thousand?
Correct.
And that would get us to a two point nine, excuse me, a one.
One point nine nine.
Is someone going to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, um.
Cynthia.
I I just, that to me, the, it's a little bit retail pricing, like one ninety nine, it's really two dollars. I I think I was pretty set on one point eight five percent. Um, and I just, I just think that it's a I think you're gambling. I think, I think people are going to look at it as two percent and not be happy, but you know, I mean, I'm in the minority, obviously, just wanted to put it out there.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to get feedback at public hearing, right? Like, you know, this would be a good number to go, I think, and get some feedback on.
No, it doesn't hurt. You know, it is, I think that there might be two ideas of what the purpose is because my, what I always think is this is the budget I could live with and see if we got it right, not necessarily put it to the public hearing hoping people will do something, you know? I mean, it's just, I hear what you're saying, but I I just look at it, this should be like the final project that we can get behind be before we send it to the.
I am, I'm just hesitating before voting because I'm still contemplating. I I to, I am, I I'm concerned that one nine nine doesn't meet the sporting chance. Um, we're talking about bringing it to a public hearing, not talking about a final decision. No, these are, these are very difficult decisions and difficult times, but why don't we just take another minute to think about it?
Uh, what what would it take to get it down to a one point nine? I mean, Cynthia, you know, we had talked about a one eight five, we're at one nine nine. I mean, if there's some sort of compromise and we think it's going to get a sporting chance, what's that number look like?
Seven fifty is at one seventy seven.
I didn't say one seventy seven.
It would be four hundred even out of the Board of Ed, Brian.
I would go for one point nine, honestly.
So, Brad, I I think I, I think I'm following it. I'm sure you all are, but just, I'm sorry, for my benefit from being slow. So, taking out of the four fifty account, four hundred thousand dollars, presumably inclusive of the one hundred of insurance, gets us to one point nine.
Correct.
Did I get that right?
Yes.
Does anybody want to make an amended motion? Got it. Everyone just said we, folks just, we're interested in one point nine, but nobody wants to make a motion. So, that to me means nobody really wants one point nine.
Well, not, not really. I mean, I felt, you know, I I offered some cuts on the other side that were adequate, but that wasn't adequate. You know, we've had a four three vote the whole way through. So, I'm just being honest with you.
Please be honest. That's nothing but, nothing but.
Bob, I've spent a four three vote the whole way through, not willing to acquiesce.
Brian, what does that have to do? If people, are folks, do folks believe one point nine is the right number? I can see that for purposes of the public hearing being the right, but.
Hesitancy, Bob, maybe the hesitancy is because we, you know, did have our minds on something else. So, as far as making the motion, that's, you know, it's not necessarily, I mean, we're kind of okay with one point nine, but it's, you know, to me, you know, I've made larger motions and they failed, so. You know, somebody can make the motion, but it's not going to be me.
So, if nobody wants to make that motion and we're good at one nine nine, Cynthia, you're shaking your head.
Only because we're, I'm okay, I I wouldn't make the motion for that. I would make the motion that I made, which was more. I don't know if that makes any sense. I'm willing to compromise if somebody, you know, does. I don't know if that makes any sense, I'm willing to compromise if somebody, you know, does something that brings it down to one point nine. I don't know how else to explain it.
I don't know. I look, I, I will make a motion, well, a motion on the floor for discussion purposes. I will make a motion, I don't know, I guess it's an amended motion, that the four fifty account be reduced by four hundred thousand dollars. Is there a? I'm sorry, did anybody second that? Robert? Any discussion?
I, I look at that extra fifty thousand dollars as a teacher. And so I'd rather, I mean, not saying that that might not happen, but I'd rather go to a public hearing and get some feedback back for it. We do that personally.
Okay, all those in favor of the amended motion to reduce the four fifty account by four hundred thousand in an effort to get to a one point nine percent budget to go to public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, so it looks like it fails. Right? Okay.
Did you have four on that, Bob? It looked like Robert Palmer's, I, Cynthia and Nick and yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sorry, yeah, I need a better count. Who voted yes for the four hundred?
Two, three.
Like, it's every, it's everyone but you.
So it passed?
Yes.
So what is the total now, Bob? I'm having a tough time. Where are we at?
I don't blame you, so, well, let's finish, let's finish what we need to do with the four fifty account, which is a revised, no, I'm sorry, we don't, the total is the total. So that is now forty-nine zero fifty. Right? Inclusive of the one hundred insurance.
Four nine.
So, uh, alright, so recapping, if I have this right, we took twenty out of Department three sixties. We took three eighty, Department three eighty, we took one hundred thousand. Department three ninety, we took thirty. Uh, where is that? Department four thirty, we took ten. On four fifty, we took four hundred. And on four sixty, we took one hundred.
Where's the insurance savings on the town side?
In the three ninety account, that's the thirty.
Thanks.
I get six hundred and sixty thousand.
And that brings it, Bob, that brings it to a one point nine?
Yes.
Yes. Somebody who wasn't on mute just expressed the same feeling I have. Alright, look, um, that's, that's where we are. Any, I think at this point, we have two motions left. Set the public hearing date and set the amounts. Um, Bob K, which way do we, what sequence do we normally use? Can we do the date first and then the amounts or the?
Do the amounts, do the amounts and then you do the date.
Alright, so Brad, can you give us the breakdown, uh, you know, this, this sheet? Give us the breakdown.
So the total town operating that includes the Board of Ed maintenance and debt would be thirty-two million eight zero four zero four eight. So that's thirty-two million eight hundred and four thousand forty-eight dollars.
Alright, can you give us the three components that aggregate to the thirty-two eight zero four zero four eight?
Sure, the debt service is the same at the five million seven eight one six three eight. Board of Ed maintenance is now three hundred and fifty thousand even. And town operating is twenty-six million six seven two four one zero. So twenty-six, six seven two four one zero.
Would you repeat the debt?
The debt didn't change, Dan, it's still the five million seven eight one six three eight.
Thank you.
And the six, and the Board of Ed operating now forty-nine zero fifty zero eighty?
Correct.
What is the overall total?
So the overall total is eighty-one million eight five four one three six. So eighty-one million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-six.
I'm sorry, Brad, one more time, eighty-one?
Eighty-one eight five four one three six.
Okay, great, thank you. I am gonna hope that an abbreviated motion will suffice. And that is a motion to accept the numbers as recited by Brad just now.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I know, uh, next on, oh, yes, that's awesome, yes.
So that was unanimous? Yes.
Yes. Now for purposes of setting the date, I'll make a motion that we set as the date for the public hearing, Monday, March twenty-second at seven PM.
By Zoom.
By Zoom.
What, what was the date, Bob?
March twenty-second, it's a Monday.
If you need a second.
Yeah, please, a second. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that takes us to the, through what we need to get accomplished tonight. We have lots of moving parts. Still, we got lots of data that might come in on revenue, on expenses. Uh, we have a regular meeting next Tuesday. Um, I would just ask that we continue to pulse the public, get people's thoughts. Try to stay as much, I know everyone's busy doing their everyday stuff, right, so this, this other part-time job can get in the way, but if we can try to stay on top of current developments, and we'll, we'll regroup on Tuesday, and then we regroup from there to the public.
Move for adjournment?
Yeah, I'll, we have a second from Dave, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a good rest of the evening.